All right, good evening, everybody. If everybody can quiet down, please. We're going to start the workshop session of the council meeting. We're going to skip right on. We're going to quickly go through some city business and we're going to go to the city manager's report on issues at prior meetings.
None at this time.
All right.
Wait, wait, wait a second. Before we start, we have some empty seats up front.
Right here.
Okay, and we have two in the front row here and one in the front row here and one in the front row here. So, ladies and gentlemen, so we have empty seats, so please...
Come up, out of the doorway.
We have two empty seats. Nobody wants to sit down? Okay, do it, Cindy.
All right. We're going to go to special events for applications, Michael.
There's only one special event. It's a surf rider...
Quiet, please.
It's a surf rider beach cleanup. That's the only event on this for tonight.
Review of tonight's meeting?
Consent agenda resolutions. Resolution 2018-380 is metered parking requirements in the downtown of waterfront effective November 24th through December 22nd. Resolution 381 is disposition of surplus property. Resolution 382 is to cancel taxes on property 26th Avenue A. Resolution 383 is canceling balances of completed sewer capital improvement authorizations. These are projects in the sewer utility that have been canceled, that have been completed, and we're canceling the extra money. Resolution 384 is the NJEDA, the Economic Development Authority grant for the Springwood Avenue turf club. This has been renamed Parkview. We have to keep the old name for the grant. This was for the environmental cleanup that was required at the site. 385 is a resolution that accepts the money. 386 is an RCA project at 1305 Langford, and 398 is a special events application. Is there any questions from the governing body on the consent agenda items?
Nothing.
Hearing none, we'll move on to individual resolutions. Resolution 387 is the approving payment of bills. Resolution 388 is the capital budget amendment. The capital budget amendment is also tied into a couple of resolutions and ordinances later. We've had a couple of issues at the sewer plant that need to be fixed. This budget amendment will allow items at the sewer plant to be fixed. Resolution 389 is a refunding of $7 million in debt. This is to save the city money. We're getting a lower interest rate. The local finance board yesterday signed off on this refunding. Resolution 390 is authorizing the city to go before the local finance board, waiving the approval of a down payment waiver for the proposed firehouse. Currently, we have a site that is very promising for the firehouse. Later on in the agenda, there's an ordinance for approximately $20 million to purchase, remediate the normal process of looking at a firehouse. At this point in time, we're not stating the property, obviously, by address. Under New Jersey's local bond law, what is required is a 5% down payment. So, this would be a million dollars in a $20 million project. We're asking the local finance board to waive that down payment. Any purchases off of that ordinance would be done via resolution. So, this is just the first part in trying to build the much-needed firehouse. Resolution 391 is the standard transfer of appropriations. As everyone knows, transfers within line items can be done from November to March. Resolution 392 is emergency contract for the wastewater treatment plant boiler repair services. The boilers broke in the sewer plant and obviously is ordered...
I'm standing here, I'm standing here. I haven't got a ticket. Okay? It's over with.
Resolution 392, I'll start over, is an emergency contract for the wastewater treatment plant boiler services. The boilers are 30 years old and they have started to completely go. One of them caught fire. The heating elements have stopped working. We need to repair the boilers in an emergency situation before the winter comes and aspects of the sewer plant freeze. Resolution 393 is the continuation of the contract for animal control services with the SPCA. 394 is awarding a contract with CDVG funds to Pisano-Godano Construction for the basketball court repair. This is off of a state contract to the Middlesex Education Services Commission. 395 is a contract for the police department radios. We purchased new radios a year ago. The contract, the service contract is running out. It's re-upped, so the service contract. 396, we're asking to table. And 397 is a resolution entering into an Esco agreement, the first ever Esco agreement for lot by lot in the waterfront. Is there any questions on the resolutions?
No.
Moving on to ordinances, 218-37, staff is requesting no action on. Resolution 218-48 is appropriating the sum of $70,000 for the RBCs. This is what cleans the sewage in the sewer plant. We've been continuously improving these, repairing them. This is that continuous improvement. 49 is the continuation of the RBCs and for the...
The desk open wide, drive open wide, all right?
49 is the continuation of the RBCs and the boiler funding. 2018-50 is the $20 million that we anticipate on a top shelf for the purchase, acquisition, and building of a firehouse. We do not expect to spend $20 million. We're estimating it's going to be somewhere 12 to 15 at this time, but we'd rather have more than less, especially with the local finance board approvals. 351 is a handicap parking. 352 is a handicap parking. 353 amends the term of licensing in the, in chapter four. This creates better dates to stop some of the confusion that's been occurring. And 50, I believe, is going to be tabled. Is there any questions on introduction? Moving on to second reading, 21, resolution 218-21, where staff is recommending table. Resolution 2018-39, staff is recommending that council tables this. Resolution 2018-42, again, staff is recommending tabling this. For second reading for ordinance 46, 2018-46, this is a handicap parking space. And for second reading is 2018-47 is amending certain salaries of city employees to comport with the Equal Pay Act. Is there any questions on anything on second reading? Thank you.
Matters by city council.
Okay, so, the Deal Lake cleanup that was scheduled for last week in the rain has been rescheduled for Saturday, the 17th, at 9:00. Everybody meets at the boat ramp by the 7:11. Be there. Veterans Day, the city of Asbury Park has a Veterans Day ceremony with, at the Harold J., Harold Daley Post 1333 at 701 Lake Avenue, November 12th at 10:00.
On Saturday, November 10th, there's Free Raiders Clinic. It will be held at the firehouse on Main Street from noon to 1:30 PM.
On Thursday, oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
This past Halloween, Asbury Park Recreation was able to have a truck retreat and we serviced 1,000 kids. Congratulations to the committee. Thank you.
Maybe it was somebody's phone.
On November 29th, the city is having an informational session on all our boards, committees, and commissions. So, every city board, whether it's environmental or APTV, will be there to explain essentially what they do, what kind of commitment it's like to be on their board, and, you know, whether or not we have any openings. So, we hope we get a crowd like this out for November 29th to learn about the boards, committees, and commissions in Asbury Park.
The only thing I have is to thank Jesse and the recreation committee again for truck retreat. Excellent event and unbelievable how many children were there. Thank you.
Matters by the city manager, best practices for 2018, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A few years ago, then-Governor Corzine signed the law that municipalities must follow a quote-unquote "best practice standard." It is best practices on budgeting, planning, infrastructure improvement. If you do not meet a certain requirement, you get some of your state aid taken away. It's 1% of your final payment, which is about $120,000, I believe, for the city in the fourth quarter. For the fifth year in a row, the city has met the best practice standards. We won't be losing any money in the state aid. This year, we scored a 96%, where we've been consistent. The law requires that we talk about it in a council meeting. It has to be reflected in the minutes. Thank you.
Matters by the city attorney?
Nothing at this time.
All right, this time, we'll move into our presentation by Asbury Partners iStar regarding the boardwalk.
You see, we tried to open them yesterday. You see the rope hold them together? They're 30 years old, so that's the reason they're not being opened. Okay, so I'm a law. Thank you. Next. Go ahead.
Just want to make sure it's silent. Can everyone in the back hear me?
No. That microphone's not on.
Is it on?
Can everyone hear me now? Much better. I don't want to put my back to the mayor and council or the public, so I'll try and angle myself this way. But, good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Phillips-Smith. I am an attorney with Gibbons PC. I'm here tonight in behalf of Asbury Partners, which, you know, is an affiliate of iStar. I wanted to thank the mayor and council for allowing us this opportunity to come out and to provide a public update concerning the North End Boardwalk Improvement and Resiliency Project. The heavy lifting tonight is going to be done by our project professionals. We've brought with us this evening a professional planner, Keenan Hughes. We've brought with us our landscape architect, Tom Bauer, and we've brought with us our project engineer, Bob Curley from Mazer Engineering. Before I bring them up, though, I thought I'd maybe set the stage by helping to tell you a little bit of background information and specifically to talk about what this project is not. The construction equipment that you see out on the beach today is not associated with the construction of any beach club or any condo building or any building whatsoever. The project that is under construction today is a project to build a public boardwalk, a system of dunes, and a public parking lot. And that's the information that we will talk to you about tonight. When this project is completed, and it's anticipated to be completed before Memorial Day, the public boardwalk will be longer than it was in 2018. There will be an additional block of public boardwalk. When this project is completed, the square footage of the boardwalk will increase over what was there in 2018. When this project is completed, there will be a parking lot to replace the informal gravel lot. That parking lot is going to allow public access for people who want to drive to the north beach, to gain access to the public beach, access to fishing. That parking lot is being constructed under current DEP stormwater regulations. The parking lot importantly is going to have six ADA accessible spaces. We know that that is something that this council is committed to, is increasing public access for people of all abilities to the beach. By having a parking lot with ADA spaces is going to go a long way to reaching that goal. In addition to public access, the improvements that are being constructed, boardwalk and the dunes, are being done to increase the resiliency of the North End. The dunes that we will, you'll hear described this evening are going to have 20,000 new plantings in the four-block area. Those plantings are being done both to help sustain the dunes and stabilize them, but also to increase the natural habitat on the waterfront. These plans did not come about overnight. In fact, these plans have been in the works originally since 2002. It was the vision of the council back in 2002 through the waterfront redevelopment plan that the boardwalk on the North End should be revitalized and should be naturalized. That project was then submitted to the DEP, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. They vetted these plans and approved them as part of the CAFRA permit. But their oversight didn't end there. In 2014, after Hurricane Sandy and under the prior federal administration, there was a program to come in and review and make recommendations as to how to make Asbury Park more storm resilient. One of those recommendations was to put in a meandering boardwalk and dune system on the North End, similar to what we have here now. After 2014, the planning board again reexamined your master report. And in your master plan, through that reexamination report, it was again reaffirmed that a meandering boardwalk and dune system was an appropriate use for the North End beach. These plans were again submitted to the DEP in October 2017, and after a six-month review process, they were approved in April 2018. The council had some additional changes and concerns, and through an amended redevelopment plan in June 2018, an amended infrastructure component report, there were some changes that had to be made to the plans. And they were made, and they were resubmitted back to the DEP, which reviewed and approved the plans, and we received the approval in September. This has been a long process. It's gone through many different steps along the way through different governmental entities. And as I said, there are many technical details behind it, and that's what we're here tonight to talk about, more with our planner and our two, our landscape architect and engineer. I like the background music. So, I know I've laid out quite a bit of background, but I want to go into some of the technical aspects, because I know you're all here to learn more about the dune project, more about the public boardwalk, and more about all of the public improvements that are under construction. So, I'd like to ask Mr. Hughes, our professional planner, to come on up and to start going into some of the technical. And, Mr. Hughes, I'm going to hand you the microphone. That way, I don't want to have to sit with our back to the public, so we'll stand and do this. So, we'll share the microphone. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Hughes to start by telling us a little bit about himself, introduce himself to all of you. I know he's spoken in front of the council before, but tell everyone a little bit about yourself.
Good evening. I'm Keenan Hughes. I'm a planner. I'm a principal with Phillips Price, which is a planning firm based in Hoboken. We represent private sector and municipal clients throughout the state on planning, zoning, and redevelopment matters. I've been working with iStar since 2010. I've worked with them on all of their individual development projects, and I've also been involved with a lot of discussions about the redevelopment plan, amendments to the redevelopment plan. So, I'm very familiar with a lot of the planning history here in Asbury Park. I wanted to start by providing a little bit of context in terms of the history from sort of a planning standpoint, and first establish that, as I think many of you have witnessed over the years, there's been a lot of infrastructure improvements in the waterfront. So, things like improved sanitary stormwater systems, new streetscapes that have occurred on Asbury Avenue and elsewhere throughout the waterfront, that was all part of the infrastructure program and plan that the master developer was responsible for under the waterfront redevelopment plan. This is the next phase of those infrastructure improvements. So, these are public improvements on public property. There's no privatization of public property occurring here. This is simply the next phase of public infrastructure improvements that iStar/Asbury Partners is responsible for. So, going back to the origins of the redevelopment plan and where this whole idea of the meandering boardwalk and dune concept came from was really about looking at, I'm going to show you an aerial exhibit here, which is the existing conditions on the North End. So, this is an aerial map, I guess, pre-some of the recent demolition, of course, but the most recent aerial photo that we could provide. And part of the planning for the entire waterfront, you know, from the casino all the way up to Fisherman's Parking Lot was establishing sort of two distinct areas. And to the south, to the south of Convention Hall, there was a lot of promotion around a mix of uses, entertainment uses, the more formal boardwalk, a harder edge to the city that was more traditional in concept in terms of the boardwalk. And that was really going to be the main, you know, entertainment district of the waterfront redevelopment area. Now, to the north of Convention Hall, this was always viewed as, because it is, more of a residential area, so it has a quieter feel. And because of that, there was a desire to create not so much of an active environment along the boardwalk, but more of a natural environment that would be pleasant for walking and also advance a number of environmental benefits for the community. So, that was sort of the original genesis of the meandering boardwalk and dune concept, and that really would advance five key benefits for the community. And those would be enhancing public access, and there will be additional ADA accessibility provided as part of this project that does not exist today. There will be the new public parking lot at the Fisherman's Parking Lot, which formalizes that lot and substantially increases the number of spaces that are there. There will be benefits around protecting inland development from coastal storms, and this is really consistent with the shift towards promoting livable or living shorelines in terms of advancing shoreline protection mechanisms. See this across the Jersey Shore and around the country. I would just point out that not only DEP and CAFRA, but the New Jersey Sea Grant Consortium, a number of environmental and conservation groups are advocating dune systems as shoreline protection measures. And I'm sure that's no surprise to most of you in this room. So, that's certainly part of this project. Thirdly, it's about promoting habitat for vegetation and wildlife. You're going to hear some more technical details about the proposed dunes, but this substantially increases the amount of habitable area for wildlife, birds, and so forth. So, that's part of the dune system. Also, there are aesthetic benefits in terms of creating a more pleasant walking environment to the north of Convention Hall, and we'll show you the actual plans for the boardwalk in a moment, but that was part of the original vision, again, to create a more natural, pleasant walking environment in this portion of the boardwalk. And then also to finally connect the boardwalk all the way to Lock Arbor. So, what you'll see on the plans is, whereas now the boardwalk abruptly stops, there will be connection all the way through Fisherman's Parking Lot to Lock Arbor. So, with that as a bit of a background, the next exhibit I have is the same aerial photograph, and this is now showing an overlay of the proposed improvements. So, just to summarize, and again, I have my colleagues, landscape architect and engineer are going to walk through some of the technical details, but just general terms, the project will essentially start at the alignment of Sixth Avenue, and this is the beginning of the so-called meandering boardwalk. So, this first portion of the boardwalk between Sixth and Seventh Avenue will maintain the existing width of the boardwalk to the south, which was a request by the council, and then it will narrow down to 15 feet, and that will be the walking path boardwalk, which will extend from approximately Seventh Avenue all the way up to Fisherman's Lot to connect to the north. A few other features here I'd just like to point out at the outset is the new access that will be provided at Seventh Avenue, which includes ADA accessible access to the beach at that point. The playground will be relocated to a site which is roughly aligned with Seventh Avenue. You see all of the dune, additional dunes and associated vegetation that's going to be installed on either side of the proposed boardwalk, and our landscape architect will go into some detail about that. Beach access here again, aligned with Deal Lake Drive. And then the Fisherman's Parking Lot will be improved and provide 117 parking spaces, including six ADA parking spaces, and a stormwater management system that's going to address a lot of the existing conditions relative to runoff occurring into Deal Lake. So, we have our engineer here who will talk a bit more about that. So, with that overview of the project, I just want to run through, from a planning standpoint, the chronology of a lot of the plans and the studies that have gone into this project, because it's not just the 2002 redevelopment plan, but there's been a number of different studies that have looked at this over the years. But I will start with the redevelopment plan originally adopted in 2002, and it has been amended several times, most recently just this past summer in June. But on page 17 of the plan, and this gets to the earlier point about the character of the northern part of the waterfront, the plan says, "The North Shore is less commercial and more residential than the blocks to the south. It has a naturalistic quality that is more heavily influenced by the character of the beach and Deal Lake. The goal of the plan is to reinforce these qualities with new residential development and the extension of open spaces." One of the key design principles for the North Shore, which is how the plan delineates this area north of Convention Hall to Deal Lake, is to terminate the boardwalk extension with a more natural wandering dune path to Deal Lake. So, that's what's being proposed here. And then finally, on page 23, the plan states, "This curvilinear path will be set at beach level and will provide barrier-free access along the beachfront. New dunes will be constructed to provide a backdrop of natural landforms and plantings that will also provide an enhanced degree of shoreline protection." So, again, the themes of accessibility, shoreline protection, and also just the promotion of a more naturalistic environment were all key planning concepts that were advanced as part of that original redevelopment plan. Now, in connection with the redevelopment plan, there was the approval of a CAFRA permit, because that was required. The original permit was approved back in 2004. It's been amended several times, but that permit basically applied to the entirety of the waterfront redevelopment area and all of these proposed improvements. And with respect to this proposed project, on page eight of the permit, it says the following, "Directly associated with the creation of the dunes will be a meandering 10-foot-wide boardwalk that will connect the boardwalk, which currently ends at the end of Seventh Avenue, all the way down to Deal Lake Drive. However, the plan noted above also shows existing dunes that are currently located on the site of a former restaurant and which have developed over time into a public parking area," which, of course, references the so-called Fisherman's Parking Lot. "As part of the overall development of the North Shore dune area, the applicant is proposing to construct a public parking lot as one of the ways of promoting public access and also providing additional parking for fishing at the northern portion of the city." Another excerpt from the CAFRA permit, and this is on page 17, "As detailed in the supporting documentation for the plan, dune creation and boardwalk construction are intended to provide an enhanced natural area, offer protection to development proposed outside of the high-hazard area, and provide a pedestrian link to Lock Arbor from the existing boardwalk that ends currently at Seventh Avenue." Again, that's on page 17. So, this is the DEP weighing in from an environmental standpoint about the merits of this hybrid dune boardwalk system that's proposed for the north of the city. And as Jennifer mentioned in her introduction, even more recently this year, the applicant has met with DEP twice in 2018, and DEP signed off on the plans that you see before you in September of this year, deeming it consistent with the CAFRA permit and all CAFRA requirements and rules. So, that's dating back to the redevelopment plan, the CAFRA permit. Now, on the city side, of course, the city has its own master plan and does its own planning studies. The 2006 master plan describes and supports the waterfront redevelopment plan throughout the document, and I would point out that in particularly the open space and recreation element describes the meandering boardwalk and dune projects and mentions some of its environmental and public access benefits, and that's on pages 139 to 140 of the 2006 master plan. Now, even more recently, in the post-Sandy environment, Asbury Park had a very exciting planning design competition take place, which was called Rebuild by Design. And this was an initiative of the Hurricane Sandy Rebuilding Task Force, which was funded by the Obama administration following Sandy, and it engaged top-level designers from around the world in looking at resiliency strategies for different coastal communities throughout the eastern seaboard. And Asbury Park was actually selected by this particular group led by Sasaki Design as a case study for the Headlands region. So... So that team engaged the community, worked with a lot of stakeholders throughout the city on designs, recommendations for resiliency improvements to the city. And it released a proposal for Asbury Park that did in fact recommend a hybrid dune boardwalk system for the area north of Convention Hall. It was one of the three key resiliency projects that was recommended for the city. And that concept is certainly consistent with what was actually first conceived well before Sandy and all the growing awareness we now have about sea level rise and coastal storms. So all that's to say that that federal study actually basically reiterated or reinforced this concept. And I'll just read an excerpt from that Rebuild by Design report just that describes this boardwalk dune concept. "The boardwalk offers an opportunity to rethink the beach's monoculture through a more organic boardwalk form and topography that has a new relationship to beachside development and promotes a healthier ecology. The design of the boardwalk maintains its important social role while providing a new shape to capture sand and form dunes over time, creating protection and habitat area for beach wildlife. The incomplete segment of boardwalk north of the convention center and south of the casino will be implemented first. Since no boardwalk currently exists, it is a prime site to include experimental dune/habitat creation strategies, all of which will protect the wastewater treatment facility and link to a new park near Deal Lake. The area between the boardwalk and ocean includes a sacrificial forming, dune tidal pool, and primary dune." And the text sort of goes on to describe some of these concepts, but the basic point is that this team of designers looked at the boardwalk environment here, they looked at the existing conditions from a resiliency viewpoint, and they recommended essentially what we're proposing here, which is a hybrid dune boardwalk system for this area of the city and the waterfront redevelopment area. Additionally, in 2017, the city adopted a municipal public access plan, and it's actually, to my knowledge, is one of four in the entire state that's actually been adopted by DEP. And this plan acknowledges the meandering boardwalk and notes that it will be accessible to all members of the public and provide improved public access at Seventh Avenue. And I'll just read you the excerpt relative to the boardwalk, which is, "The city of Asbury Park is planning to extend the boardwalk at its northern end to span the eastern perimeter of the Fisherman's Parking Lot and along the Surf Beach. In this area, the wooden boardwalk will meander through the existing dunes, allowing users to visually access a more natural and undeveloped beach environment. While at this time it is not anticipated that the planned extension will not, will provide physical access to the beach, it will be accessible to all members of the public from the existing northern terminus of the boardwalk." But in fact, there are additional, as I pointed out, ADA access point being provided at Seventh Avenue. And actually, the municipal public access plan references that on page 15. And then just in wrapping up here, the 2017 master plan reexamination report, so this was adopted just last year, acknowledged the Rebuild by Design Plan, which I just described as one that quote, "honors the social function of the boardwalk while redesigning it to create dunes and vegetation within its edges that can protect the development behind it." Now, more recently, in connection with these specific plans, as was mentioned earlier, there was an amendment to the redevelopment plan over this past summer in June, I believe, which was the so-called Lot-by-Lot Amendment. And as part of that, the Infrastructure Component Report, which is the technical name for basically the infrastructure plans for the waterfront, that was also amended. But the concept of the meandering boardwalk and dune system remained in place, was reapproved by council and the master developer, and it was to extend from Sixth Avenue to Fisherman's Lot. And the council did recommend or require that the existing width of the boardwalk be maintained between Sixth and Seventh Avenues. That's what's shown on these plans. And also, the width of the meandering boardwalk increased from 12 feet to 15 feet. And actually, as I pointed out earlier, the original redevelopment plan and CAFRA permit contemplated a 10-foot-wide meandering boardwalk, what's now before use a 15-foot-wide boardwalk. So again, CAFRA approved those designs quite recently. And with that little sort of walk-through the chronology, I think just in concluding here, I would note that the shoreline protection and habitat creating concept that was originally the boardwalk and dune system is one that even though it was conceived back in the early 2000s, is one that's been reaffirmed by numerous planning studies in the interim. And even in the post-Sandy environment, those environmental benefits that were identified way back when remain valid. And in fact, some, you know, top designers in the world have looked at the same situation, recommended the same solution in terms of the more natural meandering living shoreline that's proposed as part of this project. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
So we've heard a lot about why, you know, how this program came to be, why it's proposed to be meandering. I'd like to now turn over to Tom Bauer to talk about what, the physical, what is actually being proposed. And Tom will come up. But to reiterate, there are no buildings. You're going to hear about the boardwalk?
Yes.
You're going to hear about the dunes?
Yes.
The project under construction does not have any buildings. So we'll let Mr. Bauer describe.
Okay, okay, okay. Questions will be later. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Good evening, folks. Good evening. My name is Tom Bauer, by way of introduction. I'm a landscape architect. My firm is Malillo &amp; Bauer Associates. We've been in business for a long time. Our office is in Brielle, New Jersey, main office. We have a second office in Jersey City. My firm has done extensive work over the last 35, 40 years along the Jersey coast, all the way from Cape May and Lower Township up through Atlantic City to LBI, up into Belmar, where we master-planned the new Belmar Boardwalk that many of you may know, and up along the riverfront, along Jersey City, Hoboken, all the way up to Fort Lee. So we have a lot of coastal experience, and we've done a lot of projects and improvements along that, those areas over those years. So by way of experience, we do have extensive experience with oceanfront and riverfront projects. Keenan did a wonderful job explaining the project. I have some to add. He covered much of it, did a great job. I am going to actually go back to the existing conditions plan for a moment, and then I'm going to show you, talk about it a little bit, and then I'm going to show you some photographs of some of the existing conditions, previously existing conditions, because as you know, some of it has been removed already. But just by way of orientation, just so some of you are familiar with this area and can reference this plan, we're starting with the Convention Hall to the south end here. Our boardwalk in this location is 64 feet wide today. It has been, the removal has started at Sixth Avenue, as Keenan has indicated. From that point, the boardwalk previously was 25 feet wide, up until the point where it terminated at Deal Lake Drive. As we pass here, we're paralleling obviously Ocean Avenue, where we pass Bradley Park, the Berkeley Hotel, the North Beach condominiums in this location, that's the orange tower that's shown right here. To the north of that, on Seventh Avenue, is the North Eats Food Truck Area, that is adjacent to the boardwalk, nice amenity for the public, and associated public parking that goes along with that in this location. And then just to the north of that area is this white structure, is the wastewater treatment facility, as we know exists on the oceanfront. Beyond that is the Asbury Towers. And then we get to Deal Lake Drive, and what is referred to as the Fisherman's Parking Lot, which is actually a stretch, to call that a parking lot. I'm going to show you why in a few minutes. We do have some existing dunes in this area that we will be preserving. They are there to the east of Fisherman's Parking Lot. So with that, let me show you a few photographs, folks, that will help explain why we're doing what we're doing. The, I'll start here. This first photograph is an actual true-scale photo of the boardwalk as it exists today. I apologize if you folks can't see this, but take my word for it. You can see this is a pressure-treated wood that is on a boardwalk today, and as you can see, it's in terrible condition. It splinters, it fails. As we all know, if you've all walked the boardwalk, we all know it's a difficult situation, many injuries in terms of splinters and whatnot, that kind of thing. So this is actually, almost as I said, true scale. This is what it looks like. And that's why, as you'll be seeing or hearing, we're, our proposal is for the boardwalk to be a composite material as we move forward, as opposed to this wood because of the, it lasts longer, really. This fails very soon. It doesn't last long. And pressure-treated today, folks, is not what it used to be years ago either. It just doesn't last as long. So that's what we are proposing. And by the way, I did mention that I worked in Belmar, all, Belmar, Spring Lake, all those areas. Many of the beachfront areas today are composite lumber, and they do last longer. Splinter's not an issue. Maintenance is less, so the cost of maintenance to the city is much reduced. This is again, this is a condition of what happens, this is there today. This is a photograph taken this week of the boardwalk. You can see the replacement planks where boardwalks, where the boards fail and rot and deteriorate. We've seen areas where you can actually step through the boardwalk when it fails. So it's a very difficult and very costly material to utilize. This is, this is the Fisherman's Lot. This is a photograph taken this week. As you can see, it's, to me, as I said before, calling this a parking lot is a stretch. This is a, an area that is unkempt. It's in very poor condition. It's never been a parking lot. It's an area where cars park. I guess you would call that a parking lot, but it's just a sand area. There's no pavement. It's just, it's an area in need of aesthetic improvement, if nothing else, folks. Okay? You can see trash cans, you can see debris. It's an unsightly unkempt area. That's what it looks like today. We want to improve that. We want to improve that. This is another view of that area. It does have some lights, but again, it's not graded properly. You can see puddles, there's areas of ruts and debris, and it's just an area in need of repair. Can be much nicer. And Asbury Park deserves this to be a much nicer area. This, again, this is debris that's on the site. We've all seen it. It's been a dump. Over the years, it's happened. We've been looking at this forever in this condition. This is an opportunity for us to improve that and repair this area. And one last view of it, looking back at, to the south. Again, I made the point. So let me go back to, if I may. Thank you, Jen. I'm going to show you side by side the existing plan as opposed to the existing plan as Keenan had done. And again, the boardwalk photos that I showed you were taken right in this area as it exists today. And of course, that's the area, the photos where I was showing you were Fisherman's Lot today. So by, so by implementing the improved plan as Keenan described it, this is what we're going to have. Again, starting at Sixth Avenue, we're going to create this, the meandering boardwalk will begin there. It's going to be in the, for the first block, from Sixth to Seventh Avenue, it will remain 64 feet wide. From that point on, at this location, we're going to start with a 15-foot-wide meandering boardwalk that will take us through a dune system. That boardwalk at 15 feet wide will be a true 15 feet, because all of the benches, I think we have 25, if I remember correctly, 25 benches, 30-some streetlights or boardwalk lights, all of those will be outward of that boardwalk. So we will in fact have a true 15-foot-wide walkway. Unlike, as an example, if any of you walk Spring Lake Boardwalk at all. Spring Lake has a 16-foot-wide boardwalk, but I will tell you that it has benches and trash cans and lights all within that area that take up sometimes three, four feet of dimension out of that boardwalk. And again, throngs of people walk the Spring Lake Boardwalk, this boardwalk will feel wider than that and will accommodate people. As I mentioned, it's going to be level, as Keenan mentioned. We have handicap access and beach access, boardwalk access in numerous locations as we have today. In fact, we have one more. We're adding a beach access point in this location at Seventh Avenue. We have handicap access down to the relocated playground. Keenan mentioned that. This playground today is a little bit south of here. We're moving it north to facilitate the construction of this arched new boardwalk area. So we have plenty of access to the boardwalk from the street, and we have access from the boardwalk to the beach to accommodate everyone. And that boardwalk, as Keenan indicated, will extend from Deal Lake Drive up to the parking lot in this location. There is handicap access at this location as well. The length of the boardwalk will be extended approximately 400 lineal feet, 400 feet longer than it stays, longer than a football field, which is 300 feet. So a much longer boardwalk. When we get to the parking lot, we've got 117 parking spaces, of which six of those are for handicap parking, handicap accessibility in this location. There, in the parking lot, will also be bicycle racks. It will be well-lit, as will the entire boardwalk. We have beach access at this location for maintenance vehicles, for DPW. That will be a gated access. And then we also have access for surfers, for parking, for fishermen as well. So it's a wonderful improvement, and I think today, my guess is that we could, that the area where people park today could accommodate maybe 35 to 40 parking spaces, is what we've counted. This will be 117, so substantially, a substantial increase in the number of parking spaces for convenience. Let me talk to you about the dune for a moment. We mentioned the dune. Keenan mentioned the dune. There are really three very important aspects of the dune. Obviously, stormwater protection and resiliency is one, especially in this area, which is opposite the wastewater treatment facility. This dune will be created entirely new as the primary dune, meaning the dune on the water side of our boardwalk. There will also be a secondary dune and dune planting on the landward side of that boardwalk. So two dunes, the dune that we will be walking through to provide ample stormwater protection to the wastewater facility. That new dune planting and grading will be meshed into the existing dune. So we'll, in no way, shape, or form be damaging the existing dune, but we will be enhancing it and meshing this in so it becomes one dune system. So a primary dune and a portion of a secondary dune. That dune will be created through the use of snow fencing. Some of you may be aware of how you build a dune, how it's done from an engineering perspective, but it's done with dune fencing and beach grass. A lot of beach grass, as Jen, I think, indicated, over 20,000 beach grass plants will be planted. And over time, that dune will create itself and will naturalize, become an organic feature, and it will be soft edges as opposed to the hard edge of the boardwalk today. So it's very natural. In addition to the, to the resiliency and the stormwater protection, it becomes great wildlife habitat for birds, for nesting, for feeding, even for aquatic life. It's a wonderful feature. And then lastly, the aesthetic benefit. It will be very, very nice to look at, to walk through, to take photographs in. We'll see sunrise through the dunes on the boardwalk. This will be a lovely area. So it's a great improvement over some of the photographs that you saw here today to what it will be in the future. Jen, did I miss anything?
I had one question about the height of the dunes. Is it my understanding that they will not exceed four feet above the boardwalk? Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Due to the width of the dune area, those dunes will not exceed a height of four feet. It will be physically impossible for it to do that. So as a result, as we're walking through that meandering boardwalk, we'll always be able to look, as long as you're over that height, be able to look over top of that dune toward the oceanfront.
All right, I think that's it. All right, we have one last person to come up and provide a little bit more of the technical information, and that's Bob Curley, our civil engineer from Mazor. And I'm going to just ask him one or two questions, but I'll let Bob introduce himself to you first, and then we'll ask our questions.
Hi, I'm Bob Curley. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I've been involved with Asbury Park since 2000, probably one of the only professionals still involved in the project since its inception. So I'm fairly familiar with the approval process that Keenan outlined very, very clearly, and just here to speak very briefly about the stormwater management. The overall infrastructure plan calls for improvements to the overall waterfront redevelopment, including stormwater management improvements. At the time when we got our original approval, the improvement requirements were for 50% removal of total suspended solids. As part of what we're doing today, we're going to be adding a stormwater management system that will collect water, not only for the Fisherman's Parking Lot, but for a portion of Deal Lake Drive, and adding two water quality structures and providing 80% removal rates, which is the current standard for the DEP on the new parking lot. So that's pretty much it. There's not a lot to it, it's a little dolled up.
I am not an engineer, so I'm going to ask a follow-up question. So my understanding today is that water flows over the gravel and sand lot and can run into Deal Lake Drive, correct?
That's correct. There's currently no, there's currently no water quality measures that are treated for Deal Lake Drive or for the Fisherman's Parking Lot.
Today, the water runs over, it picks up whatever Today, the water runs over, it picks up whatever debris, it picks up the oil from cars that are parked there and goes into the lake.
That's correct.
And when the new infrastructure plans are put in place that are up to the DEP stormwater, current stormwater regulations for the parking lot, is that still going to be the case?
No, it won't. The stormwater management system is, collects stormwater, runs it through a water treatment device, removes oils and sediments, and then discharges it after treatment into the lake.
The filtered water. So that, that's Bob's very short piece. So just to kind of summarize what you've heard, and I know it's been, it's been long. This project has a boardwalk that is longer, has more square footage than you had before. This boardwalk has additional pedestrian access that didn't exist, particularly at Seventh Avenue. This plan has ADA access in a parking lot that did not exist before, and it's going to allow greater accessibility to the north end. This project has a dune system for both resiliency and aesthetics that didn't exist before and that is going to help provide protection to this end of the beach. And it's a new boardwalk. It replaces the existing boardwalk that we, you know, showed pictures, was in desperate need of repair. So there will be a new public boardwalk. There will be a new public walking path through the dunes. There will be new public parking. And all of that is on track currently to be delivered prior to Memorial Day next year. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Okay, thank you. Before we go into the public portion, this is time for council to ask any questions. And so I'm going to start off by asking some questions. And first, I think a couple of quick corrections. Nowhere in the plans do I see room for 25 benches. So I don't know where you came up with that number. I believe the boardwalk is not 25 feet wide. It is wider. So I think a couple of small mistakes there. Going back to the 2002 original plans, it shows the meandering boardwalk starting at Seventh Avenue. When was it changed to Sixth? And by who?
That was changed in the Infrastructure Component Report that was adopted by the council in June 2018. And what it did is the council allowed for the curvilinear alignment to start here, but required that it be maintained at 64 feet during this stretch. So it has been maintained.
But I don't believe that to be correct, but we'll let that go this time. Because in the, somehow in lot by lot and block by block, it was tried to be put into the agreement that had nothing to do with the boardwalk. Lot by lot, block by block was west of Ocean Avenue. And all of a sudden, it was going to be, the meandering boardwalk was going to start at Sixth Avenue. At the last second, we picked up on that and we said, no, no, no. It's going to be the same as it is now, but I don't remember agreeing to it starting at Sixth Avenue. And again, the 2002 plan shows it started at Seventh. Keenan said the 2002 plan shows it started at Seventh. Our plan shows it starts at 2007. If we agree to that, that's a new one on me, so I'll leave that to our professionals down the road. Going back to the Mazer report dated 5/11/17. The north end naturalistic boardwalk and Seventh Avenue boardwalk. And people thought I was crazy because I worked for the city and I remember a bathroom being in the plans. And everybody told me, no. Well, in the 2017 plan, it's still the bathroom. So who knocked the bathroom out from the 2017 plan to the 2018 plan? Page four of a seven-page report stamped and dated by Mazer, 5/11/17, page four, shows the bathroom on the south side of the Fisherman's Lot.
And what was the date on that again?
5/11/17.
That was definitely before any submission to the DEP. I don't think I've seen that.
No, there was four submissions to CAFRA and DEP, I believe. And this was an earlier one, but then when it came back to the 18, and again, all the professionals being fairly new on our side, said, John, there was never any bathroom. I said, BS. I remember seeing the renderings. There was a bathroom at one point. I, today, going through plans, found it on the Mazer report, still there in 5/11/17.
I could tell you that it is not on the plans that were submitted to DEP in October 2017 because there are no buildings on the plans.
I know, so where, who eliminated?
That I don't know.
And with the city's permission?
The city engineers have reviewed these plans, the city multiple times. This was not something that we came up with and just started building. This was submitted to the city engineer multiple times over. So I suppose you could ask the city engineers when they reviewed this, what discussions had. In fact, there were a number of changes that were made at the request of city engineers to upgrade what was being proposed.
Okay. And then, again, look at the plans today and trying to measure these things with a rule of one inch equals and everything. So my numbers are going to be close, but not perfect. The beach, and it's tough to measure the beach now because we can't get out on it because of the construction, I'm guessing is about 180 to 210 feet wide.
We can have Mr. Bauer, I think, come on up and talk about this. If you want to, go ahead and ask the question, I'll have him answer.
Okay. But with, I'll call them bumpouts because I hate bumpouts. So with the meandering boardwalk and the bumpouts for the dunes, we're going to lose 80 to 120 feet of our beach.
Well, let's, let's talk about that. We can talk about that. So first, when you talk about losing beach, let's keep in mind, we're not losing it to buildings. If you're quote-unquote.
Okay, okay. It's our time to question. You will all get a chance to question. And what I ask you to do, when you ask the questions, you're going to be limited to three minutes, but you can pass to the next person. And when you're done with your questions, if you would be polite enough to maybe walk outside and let somebody else in, and if not, you can get the message to anybody outside. If they have questions, they can't get in, put them in writing, and we will address them and get back to them. And again, sorry that we don't have a bigger room. We couldn't get one on short notice and Kathy knows that and we're stuck here today. I apologize for that, so go ahead.
So first, there are no private improvements proposed for the public beach.
Not yet.
No, not.
So we're going to let everybody talk, right? We're going to stay here until whatever time that it takes to hear everyone speak, but we're going to let Ms. Smith get out whatever it is that she needs to say. So when you're asking the questions, you have the information ahead. So I'm going to ask you to stop calling things out at her and just let her get her, whatever, her presentation done.
Okay, so let's, we can have Mr. Bauer come up and look at the plans.
Let me finish my question.
Oh, sorry, I apologize, ma'am.
So here's the part that baffles me, and I'm not an engineer either. Right now, we have a boardwalk that's, oh, good pens.
Is that the best we can do?
If a boardwalk is basically straight, I'm going to say is close to 28, 30 feet wide. Correct? Well, no, your report to us says 27 and changed, and you're saying 25, I'm saying 28, so whatever it is. Okay, we'll say it's 25. It's 25. It's more than that. So we're basically cutting it in half. And we're going to have a 15-foot boardwalk. And this is the west side. This is the east side. This is owned by the city. This is owned by you. How come it isn't meandering on both ways? Why is it just meandering on the city way? And again, I'm not an engineer, but a four-foot dune and a boardwalk at grade level, 90 feet closer to the ocean, is not resilient to me, if anything. You're going to, it's not going to be a sandy. It's going to be a northeastern storm with a little bit of force. It's going to take that dune, knock it to hell, take that boardwalk, lift it up because it's a grade level, and we're going to have to replace that boardwalk every time we have a northeastern. So we're moving, we're moving potential danger closer to Mother Nature who causes the damage. And you can even see it here and how much it juts out and how much beach we're losing. And this is our busiest end of the beach here, where in 2004, 2002, nobody went here. You're totally correct. Nowadays, on a Saturday and Sunday, this boardwalk, this beach is sold out. So we cannot afford to lose all of this. So what, you know, if I had a perfect world, I would say, do me a favor, just put it back the way it was. Put, put some dunes in, no problem. And the dunes on both sides is like, well, right now, if we have a northeastern, the wind's going to blow and we're going to get sand on the boardwalk. Right now, if we have an east wind or a west wind, a boardwalk at grade level, every day, we're going to have sand on that boardwalk. So forget the seniors in wheelchairs, and every day, we're going to have DPW down there cleaning it off.
So we are going to ask Mr. So I am going to ask Mr. Bauer to come up to talk a little bit about the dunes, but let me just be clear about this. We can only build the specifications that are in the waterfront redevelopment plan and the infrastructure. Legally, we can only build the specifications that the city has adopted through the waterfront redevelopment plan, and that's what we've done.
Or ask for an amendment.
And you amended it.
Right.
And you did amend it. You did amend it in 2018, and the project had to go back to the DEP and was revised to attribute, to correct the things that the council asked for when you amended the Infrastructure Component Report.
What, okay, I'm sorry.
We have, these specifications match what's in the waterfront redevelopment plan that was adopted by council. They match what's in the Infrastructure Component Report that was adopted by council. They match what has been approved by the DEP. But I'll let Mr. Bauer come up for a moment because I do want to answer your question about the dunes.
Anytime you guys went to CAFRA, we did not know about it after the fact until the August or the June, lot by lot, where we put in, I believe, the redevelopment plan and the subsequent redevelopment plan, that either the developer or SDA has to let us know if they're going to CAFRA 30 days in advance. So all the times you were going to CAFRA, we didn't have a clue.
We, we have, and we submitted letters in, with this last submission, notifying the city that we were going back to CAFRA.
Right, with the last submission, but the earlier ones not. And as far as, like, you're right, the 2002 plan calls for a meandering boardwalk, but it doesn't say where it goes, it doesn't say whose land it meanders on. Where we're saying, like, why should we, it's, to me, it's like, well, you just declared eminent domain. You took a couple acres minimum of our beach. You didn't even take us to court or give us a dollar. Now, if we did that to you, we'd be in court. So I mean, we're losing all this beachfront, but you're not willing to put any of the meandering boardwalk on your property.
This, this is a public boardwalk. It's not a private boardwalk.
Well, we'll rent the property for 99 years like the green spaces for a dollar.
This is a public boardwalk that's being constructed on public property. That's how, and in the plan, it's a public boardwalk being constructed on public property.
With bumpouts, and I love the term bumpouts because I hate them, the bumpouts that go take away 90 to 100 feet of our beaches.
With dunes that are required under your plan, adopted by the city council.
Which we're saying right tonight, we'll amend our plans. And this has.
Let, I, let me have Mr. Bauer come up and talk to you a little bit.
Let me finish all my questions, then.
Sure.
The other one's getting answered. And, okay, with the beach club, and I know that has, and nobody's seen any plans for the beach club, and it is going to happen, and that's part of the plan. I have no problem with that. With the beach club, and if you can't say now, will that have public restrooms?
So I can tell you that the design for the beach club is still ongoing. It has not been finalized. It has not been submitted to the city. It is not far enough along to do that. We are working to finalize those plans, but they have not yet been finalized. And that's, that's why we're not here talking about it tonight. Because it hasn't even been submitted for your review yet. It's not imminent. It's not under construction.
Point well taken. I apologize for asking that question. Then I'll ask another question, kind of relevant to it. Doesn't the SDA on page 27 or 28 say if more public restrooms are needed, it's up to the developer to provide them?
I, my understanding is that we're perfectly willing to discuss restrooms. They aren't part of this plan, but we're willing to have discussions about further infrastructure improvements. But as of this time, we can only present to you what has been approved by CAFRA.
Do you want Mr. Bauer to respond? Thank you.
Let me put this plan back up here for a moment.
Don't cover my Picasso.
I'm sorry. I'll move it back over. It was a nice job. Okay, I think the question was, how much here are we taking, how much are we taking up? I'm going to scale, this is a 60-scale plan. This area right here is about 80 feet of dune in this location. 80 feet of dune. Now, I will tell you that if you follow my finger, this is the existing line of the boardwalk. All of our boardwalk is built within the, none of the boardwalk goes beyond the line that it is now. It's all back, right? If you follow this line of the existing boardwalk, that's where the edge of this meander is, approximately, is right there. So you're right, and with this dune at this size, it's taking up at this point 80 feet of that beach area.
Well, a report from your offices would say 90 feet. At Station 5+50, at Station 8+50, the boardwalk meanders to the east. So the east edge of the boardwalk is approximately 40 feet east of the existing boardwalk. To the east of that is the dune, which is approximately 50 feet in those areas. That shift allows for insulation on both sides of the meandering boardwalk. 40 and 50 is 90 to me, not 80. And that came from I-STAR's offices.
So just to clarify, does it vary over the course of that dune? Like, from here to, it's not the same straight across, right? So there are variations.
Right. I said, at some places, we lose 80, some places, we may lose 120. Again, my numbers may be off 10 feet here and there, like yours numbers are off. But it's some, and I'm going to say, right in front of the beach club, I'd see no purpose whatsoever as far as a dune. Why can't the boardwalk just go straight in front of the beach club? Why does a dune have to go in front of a beach club? To what, to protect the beach club? I don't care.
That's a good question. So, again, the plans for the beach club have not yet been finalized.
No, but the plans for the bumpout and the dune are in front of the beach club.
And as part of the Infrastructure Component Report, the curvilinear alignment started at Sixth Avenue.
That doesn't, the curvilinear alignment does not mean that it has to be dunes.
The curvilinear alignment starts, under the Infrastructure Component Report that was adopted by the city, the curvilinear alignment starts at Sixth Avenue, and the city required the boardwalk to be 64 feet in that location, and that's how this was proposed and submitted to the DEP to comply with the Infrastructure Component Report.
Well, when you said, we agreed to this in Ju-, June of 18, and that's when you went back to CAFRA for another permit in August 8 of 18. Our professionals are saying we never agreed to that.
Well, we, we can sit down and go over the Infrastructure Component Report together.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a question?
I do. So you're saying the dunes are four feet high. Are residents that are in wheelchairs and children that are walking on that boardwalk won't have any sight of the ocean or the beach?
I'll ask Mr. Bauer to address that.
Sure. Understand that that's what I said would be a maximum. I'm saying the dunes are never level. They undulate, that they will be low, they will be higher. The maximum they will go is four. So there will be areas, I'm sure, where a person in a wheelchair could see through. I'm sure.
What happens when there is a storm and the sand is covering from the dunes? Sorry. What happens when there is a storm and the sand from the dunes is covering those boards? What are we supposed to do? Go out and sweep them? You can't walk with wheelchairs on the sand. What's going to happen?
My experience with boardwalks that we've been involved with is exactly that. It happens in spring. I've mentioned Spring Lake, I mentioned Belmar, both of those boardwalks, as well as other boardwalks, Atlantic City, the areas down in Lower Township. All of these areas, when there is a storm and sand blows, the answer is yes, they blow it off. I'll tell you at home, I live in Manasquon. Manasquon has an asphalt walkway that's flush, and with every windy storm, sand blows on it, and the lifeguards go walk downs very simply with a blower, mechanical blower, and blow it off. That's what they do. I mean, that is, that's the reality.
There's no lifeguards here in the winter.
It's boardwalk, it's boardwalk maintenance. It's maintenance, that's what it is.
Yeah, no, so mine's just going to be a quick comment. I think because of the two, you know, look, in 2002, me and my dog were on the beach there, right? Nobody else was really on the beach there. And so I think that from this council, and clearly from the public, there's a concern that, you know, in 2018, the vision in 2002 and the vision in 2018 might need some tweaks, right? And the idea of going from essentially a 30-foot boardwalk to a 15 is a little disconcerting, considering the number of crowds that we're getting in Esberry Park these days, particularly on the North End. So I think, I'm gonna guess that that is gonna continue to be a concern for us, and I would imagine as well as the public.
And originally...
Just, okay, no public at this time, just so everybody knows, above the curtains that don't open are numbers, one feet, five feet, 10 feet, 20 feet, 25 feet. And we don't even have 30 feet, so we had to stop at 28 to give everybody a view of what is there and what's gonna be there. So you see exactly what 15 is, what 10 is, what everything is.
And if you recall, back in 2004, the original proposal was for a 10-foot boardwalk. So it's been increased by another 50% to bring it up to a 15-foot boardwalk. And as you heard from, I believe it was Mr. Bauer, the benches are not within those 15 feet, there's little carve-outs.
Yeah, but there's not 25.
There's not 25 feet, there's not...
There's not 25, there's like four bump outs for like two benches, there's like total of eight benches, I would say.
Actually, we can clarify that.
Okay. Clarify it.
There's, on both sides of, of the proposed alignment, there's benches being placed. There's, uh, a number of areas on the east side...
Do you have the plans with you?
Right here.
Okay, how many bump outs for benches?
So there's, there's two scenarios for benches. On the west side of the boardwalk, that would be for two benches each. And we have, uh, depicted one, two, three, four, five. Five areas where there'll be two benches on the west side of the boardwalk.
Okay, that's 10 benches.
On the east, on the east side of the boardwalk, there'll be three bench areas. And again, both facing the ocean. And we have one, two, three of those.
So that's, so that's 19, that's not 25?
Okay, hold on, hold on. We have an area that's close to the Fisherman's Parking Lot.
We don't care about that.
Excuse me, you asked me how many benches.
On the boardwalk, on the boardwalk, right now, right now we have close to 50, and they're saying there's not enough.
The area next to the Fisherman's Parking Lot on the west side of the boardwalk, there's an area for four benches.
Okay, we're up to 23.
And then, at the access point for, adjacent to the Asbury Towers, there's two other benches that are on the 45.
Okay, we found the 25, thank you.
And actually, my understanding, Mayor, is that you raised this issue with, with I-STAR within the last week or so. And that they've been able to find room to, there were 54 benches before, and there will be 54 benches after.
Okay, thank you.
So we've been able to find the space for those.
So there'll be bump outs for 54 benches?
There will be room for 54, there will be room for 54 benches.
Well, they're saying no.
Right, just to clarify, over here, there are no bump outs, so in the 64-foot section. So the benches in the 64-foot section won't be on bump outs.
They'll be on the boardwalk.
They'll be on, they'll be on the...
And you're saying from where the raggedy old cloyty boardwalk was, we only had 25 benches?
No, you had 54, from, from here to where it ended, you had 54 benches. And in those areas, you will continue to have 54 benches.
But a majority of them, unless I'm wrong, are closer to, I'm gonna say, the location of the proposed swim club, not down in front of the senior towers where the seniors like to sit on them.
I think we'd be willing to have a discussion about the bench patients.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the questions from us, so what are we doing? Going to write to...
All right, motion to close workshop?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, are we rolling right into the regular?
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna roll into, right into the regular session, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'm gonna do roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
All right, I guess all rise for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection, please. Is she all right? Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Crest, the Coast and the Star Legend on January 4th, 2018, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
All right, each member of the public will have three minutes to speak. When you come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please. Well, when you come up to the mic, you'll see the three minutes.
Maybe you can just move it back.
Go ahead, go ahead.
John Lasota, 58, Dover Court, 10 Falls.
You're gonna have to either talk into the mic.
I really don't wanna say my address to everybody in the room, nor does it matter where I live, 'cause I'm here to discuss the beach, which should be open and free to everybody. That's my comment and statement.
It is, but you have to state your address for the whole...
It's not open and free, I did state it. If you can hear it on the mic and it goes through the thing, I've already said it.
Okay, whatever, go ahead.
Yeah, exactly, whatever. My point is, this lot that you're calling an enhancement now, I don't see how you paving it and then charging people to park there, which I'm assuming you're gonna do. Am I correct or not?
Incorrect.
Incorrect, it'll be free and open.
Correct.
Free and open. The buildings that you're saying you're not building, this has nothing to do with it, but you are going to build a beach club? Or a pool somewhere in that area there? Yes or no? I'm asking a question, are you building, a building there on the, closer to the convention hall area? Not answering, okay, I don't know, I thought this was a question thing. No?
The city is not building a beach club or a pool club.
They're building a beach club.
The city is not.
And a building there.
They have the rights to build a pool club.
Just wanted to clear that out, yeah. So again, my comment is just, this is one of the last free and open spaces left in this area. I'm not from Asbury Park, so you don't have to take anything I say, you know, take it with a grain of salt, whatever you wanna do. But I do surf in the area and have for many, many, many years. And as a surfer, just like the fishermen and other beachgoers and people that love the beach and love to walk here, that's why you live in this area. So when you kept, when you keep letting big business and big money just build and build and build on top of the waterfront, eventually we have nothing left. We're seeing the same thing in Deal where I surf, where one of their, I guess you would call them seasonal residents, has now become a member of the zoning board and has usurped a piece of land that was given to the public after Sandy. So again, the whole idea of doing this dune system, hey, dunes are great, 'cause they're not skyscrapers right on top of the waterline. How you do it, obviously you have some concerns, and I think most people share that. The dune system should be all along the waterfront, 'cause that's what protects from the storms. But when you're gonna build buildings and all other kinds of structures and call that progress for the economy or whatever else, I think that's bull. And who pays for it when that storm does come? It's not if, it's when. So who's gonna pay for that? I think it's gonna be all of us. And the fact that anyone's charging anything to go or walk onto the beach, not to mention as a surfer, the one beach that you have there is basically called Dogshit Beach, because you charge surfers to go there, but everybody lets their dogs run around and urinate and defecate all over the place. Some people clean it up, great. But if you wanna surf there, you actually have to pay, and what, you get to sit and urine and...
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I'm Kathleen Muma, I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park. These plans are the ghost of Bradley Cove, and they set the stage for your private pool club. We want I-STAR to immediately stop its ongoing construction that is based on outdated plans from 2002 and permits from 2004. Asbury Park has undergone tremendous change in 15 years, and I-STAR's current development initiatives on the North End no longer suit this city. Instead of developing on one of the largest remaining open spaces adjacent to the coast in Monmouth County and working under a shroud of secrecy, we want I-STAR to use its innovation and vast resources to develop a transparent, appropriate, and forward-looking plan for the waterfront. If we preserve our natural resources and public open space, Asbury will anchor its status as an environmental, social, cultural, and economic hub. Conversely, if we stick to these outdated plans, even in the face of drastic change, we will mature into a cookie cutter, economically binary, overdeveloped city that is in a constant battle with Mother Nature's wrath. Mayor Moore and council, you've requested multiple times in a public forum the accounting from I-STAR that shows where the funds for the redevelopment area bonds are coming from and what projects those funds are going towards. And to date, I-STAR, to my knowledge, I-STAR has still not provided that accounting. I'm asking you to again demand these records from I-STAR, and if they continue to ignore this request, it is time for you to put a hold on issuing redevelopment area bonds until the 2002 plan is amended. And I-STAR, when faced with a conundrum like this one, perhaps you might look to your company's philosophy for some guidance on what to do. So what's yours? According to your website, I-STAR seeks the white space beyond commodity capital. It uses uncommon insights to create original solutions. It says, "Contrarian and adaptable, we do not limit ourselves to particular property types or geographies or habits of thought. We think through the possibilities to see where and how our skills can unleash intrinsic value. We are true to our word and do right by the communities in which we work and help to shape." And finally, our people strive to deliver not just a thoughtful solution, but an experience that clients and partners trust and want to replicate time and time again. To Mr. Sharipka and the I-STAR team, it seems that you had best go back to your drawing board and think through the possibilities about where and how your skills can unleash intrinsic value, because no one in this room trusts what you're doing, and we certainly don't want to replicate this experience time and time again.
Hey, I'm part of her group.
Use your three minutes to say your name and address.
All right. Joyce Grant, Asbury Tower, Asbury Park. All right, as our governing body, and I realize that you asked wonderful questions, we are calling on you to do everything in your power to immediately stop the current work on our North End beach. Because we need more, you talk about public, this is our beach, this is a public beach, there's been no public input and so on, this is a big request here. Our public land and beach and ocean sustain the city's economic life and is a life-giving resource for the health and well-being of all our citizens and all life which share this space with us. I plead with you to please to save our beachfront from any further harm.
Don Brockle, Ocean Township, and chairman of the Deal Lake Commission. I'm gonna go through a couple of highlights I heard from the, the engineers and such. And you guys are professionals, and thank you for your presentations, but I got some problems with it. Number one's the sewer plant, you mentioned that the sewer plant, you're gonna put a dune up, four-foot dune, three-foot dune to protect, to protect the sewer plant. I, I think the number is 13 feet to properly protect the shoreline and New Jersey shore, especially around Deal Lake. So that, that number is not right. If you're gonna really protect, you gotta make it much higher. I hate to say that, but that's what's gonna happen. The flooding of the sewer plant does not happen from the ocean, it happens from Deal Lake. It comes in, it comes in the back. Sandy, we flooded out not only the sewer plant, right close to the sewer plant, but we got, we flooded out the towers. People were out of, out of their houses for months, and, and many other properties in that area. So Deal Lake's the key. And, you know, I, I see on the map, I see the parking lot impervious material, I would love to see impervious material, I love to see a combination to go in that storm scepter you're talking about. The manufacturing treatment device you said is a wonderful plan, I like that. But it has to be tied in to an impervious structure at that beachfront, because you know that right now that water's gonna come up right up that entrance way you have for the vehicles, and it's gonna go right on that pavement, right in Deal Lake, carrying with it everything that man could put, stick in that, in that hole. It's gonna be every beach club north of us or south of us, wherever it's come, we own, Deal Lake was flooded. You could walk in the middle of Deal Lake with the sand and debris of Allenhurst and Lock Harbor beach clubs. And that's gonna happen again, because we aren't resilient in that area. Lock Harbor I got a problem with too, but specifically in Asbury, we can do better. Resiliency, that's the piece there. Right away, easements, there's a, there's at least a 10-foot easement by the pipe, that's, I think somebody said $7 million pipe going in the lake, in the ocean from Deal Lake, that is correct. The dune structure we talked about, please, we gotta talk about that. We gotta either make it, make them smaller or make them larger, but, you know, you gotta movement towards Deal Lake. From a boardwalk standpoint, I, I'm just amazed, I mean, I have pictures here from, from way back when, going back to the, the 1935, and, you know, it was a beautiful boardwalk, it actually went right to Eighth Avenue. And, you know, we learned, right, it doesn't work. So the meandering part is not a bad idea down by Eighth Avenue, but going from Sixth Avenue, you're taking away our life, you're taking away the history that we're used to. I see Clarence Cummins rotating his grave right now, 'cause, you know, people love that boardwalk. I, I grew up on that boardwalk, I lived there. I have pictures when it was destroyed in 62. So, you know, and there was a ton of, of, of the, of chairs, of removable, movable benches, which was pretty cool back then. The backs went back and forth, yeah, in the old days. So anyway, thank you very much, and Mayor, you were right on the money, thanks.
Good evening, Pam Lamerton, Sunset Avenue. We want I-STAR to stop construction of the beach and boardwalk north of Sixth Avenue now. Just a couple of facts, Mayor Moore, you actually quoted this also. It says, it says in the plan that the meandering boardwalk is supposed to start where the, it says, where the existing boardwalk ends at Seventh Avenue. The existing boardwalk did not, did not end at Seventh Avenue. As long as I've been here, it did not end at Seventh Avenue. It went all the way down to in front of the senior tower. And as I recall in 2002, what was envisioned was that's where the meander would begin, not, not at Sixth Avenue. I have in front of me the CAFRA permit. In light of the numerous and legitimate changes to Asbury Park since 2002, we want the city to renegotiate the waterfront redevelopment plan. So in this CAFRA permit, actually, general terms and conditions, the very first term and condition is, "This permit is revocable or subject to modifications or change at any time pursuant to the applicable regulations, when in the judgment of the Department of Environmental Protection of the state of New Jersey, such revocation and modification shall be necessary." So what that says, the way I interpret that is, if there are changes to the state law, which we all know there were, finalized just this past September, then you have grounds to get this CAFRA permit either rescinded or modified. This, this permit was issued to jointly to the Asbury, to Asbury Park and Asbury Partners. So I think that the city of Asbury Park has the right to go right to DEP and ask for this CAFRA permit to be rescinded or modified. Thank you.
Dottie Evans, 1706 Park in Asbury. I just have a couple of questions. The one thing, I'm, I'm a little upset that the people from I-STAR, the representatives are, seem like they're totally ignoring us. And that's kinda getting my back up a little bit. You could at least acknowledge that we're speaking to you, because we are speaking to you. Okay? So thank you for your attention. I wanted to ask, and maybe they're right, that the CAFRA report was done in 2002 or 2004. So were these, all these permits, all these approvals that you went through, were they through the grandfathered rules pre-Sandy, or were they after Sandy? Did they go in and take into account all of the impacts of Sandy? So that's something, it wasn't really said, it was just that, yes, they approved it, but is it the grandfathered rules or is it the new rules? I wanted to also say, why is the boardwalk being cut back at Six? Why didn't they just say, "Starting at Seventh" and make it meander? Because that's, that's a huge amount of property that's being taken away from Asbury. I'm sorry, the surfer, but is the dog beach gonna still be there? Are they still gonna have the showers for the people? And I apologize to the surfer for the urine and the poop. My dog doesn't use it, but I know other dogs do, mine will not use it. And, okay, they said that the Fisherman Lot was not gonna be paid, so that's good. But I still think, why can't they just clean it up and, like, get rid of those boulders and get rid of all that paving stuff and just leave it unpaved? And another thing, they were talking about how in Spring Lake, they have to sweep, and just because they do... just because they do it, maybe they realize they made a mistake to have it be at ground level, but they're stuck with it. So they're dealing with, they're having their people go in and blow it. Doesn't mean that we should have to do the same thing and have the same mistake here. So I would look at that and say, "Oh, they made a mistake. Maybe we should think about it again." So that's, you know, that's just me, just looking at this. I'm not an engineer. I work with engineers, though, so I understand how their minds work. Let's see. Yeah, so my life is engineers. So I think that's really it. I said, look at it and say, "Why do we have to go in and cut the boardwalk back?" I think that would've made people less angry. If you just left the boardwalk standing where it was and start your meandering, that wouldn't be a problem to anybody. I just learned something new that was stopped, that 8th Avenue part just died because of the storms. I didn't know that. I thought it just stopped at 7th all the time, but what do I know? But anyway, that's pretty much it. I'm just happy to see all these people here, and I hope that Mr. Mayor, the board, the council, I hope that you do get to make them see the light. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the barking. My name is Dr. Madeline Monaco. I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue. We are demanding, I'm part of a coalition, to save Asbury's waterfront. We are demanding that the development on the northern end of the waterfront be stopped right now, so that we can negotiate a more suitable and sustainable plan that suits our city today, not from 15 years ago. This will, in effect, be a restriction of public access to the boardwalk and beach, despite the flowery description that I-STAR has painted tonight. I have many questions and comments, but here are a few. Why wasn't the public informed? We, I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue, our property manager got a notice on October 5th, which was a Friday afternoon, that construction was beginning on Monday morning. Where was, and it only went to our property manager. Wasn't that supposed to go to every single resident that's near, in close proximity? Did not get that. The plan is not compliant with the most recent CAFRA regulations and coastal management rules, and I quote, "New Jersey AC 7:7." Things have changed, and so should the plan, especially since Superstorm Sandy. And according to the 2004 CAFRA permit, a technical review committee, which includes a representative from the DEP, is supposed to review the plans and visit the site. The DEP and the city have told us that no one from the DEP has ever been to investigate the site, and they have not attended a single meeting. Doesn't that invalidate the development plan? And I wanna say a little bit more about this narrow, meandering 15-foot path. How many people, how many wheelchairs, baby strollers, bicycles, walkers, do you think will be able to fit on a narrow 15-foot path? Not many. We all know the millions of people who come from miles around, including the city, and miles around the city, to bike, play with their children on the boardwalk, and enjoy our beautiful beaches. How are these people supposed to fit on this narrow 15-foot pathway? They will not be able to effectively access the boardwalk, so I-STAR will effectively achieve their goal of creating a quarter-mile area along the waterfront that will look like an exclusive beach for wealthy people. And let me say a little bit more about that. The parking lot, the fisherman's parking lot, is a free parking lot, granted. So imagine this. People are gonna park in that parking lot, the meandering pathway will look like a private walkway to their exclusive beach club, which I know, because I've talked to Brian, and I've talked to Keenan, and I've talked to several people at I-STAR, that is the plan. There is gonna be an exclusive beach club, a membership-only beach club. How do our lower socioeconomic people access that lot? Because I can imagine that the people who are going to your pool club are gonna park in that lot, walk down this pathway that's gonna look like a private entrance to your beach club, and that will, in effect, limit access. So I'll close about six seconds. The plans do not serve our culturally and economically diverse population.
Felicia Simmons, 1034 Sewell Avenue. I'm also a part of Saul, so I'm gonna speak about the lack of diversity on the beach and that entrance. But first, before that, just because I don't wanna get, this isn't to I-STAR, this is the council, because this is a meeting. What I heard in the first part of this closed session, and I don't want anyone to realize, the lack of transparency. There's gonna be a new firehouse. Where's the new firehouse gonna be? They're bonding millions of dollars for the sewer plant, but they're not telling you what the sewer plant, what the bonding's for, and it's not for sewers or boilers, because that came up in a later part of the meeting. Right? So there's a lack of transparency. This is directly to the council. We have to address the public, and I don't wanna find out later in meetings like this, or sitting in other meetings across town, what's happening currently. You have an opportunity now to express freedom of information, right, to everybody here. And I have a really strange feeling that all these different things that will be addressed later will directly affect the west side of the town, which we are all one town. So I want everyone in this meeting to realize that it's not just Bradley Cove, and it's not just over there. There's a lack of transparency that is going together down a path throughout the city. Now, this next is really simple to I-STAR and to the council. Can we sit down as a community and make a plan that everybody can benefit from and appreciate? That is something that has never happened here. The plan, original plan in 2002, happened in a bubble, or a silo. I know people don't like that word. But it happened, it happened in a small group of people. Now we have a joint community of joint and like-minded people. Can we sit down, since I am so pleased and I am very proud, saying that you're gonna amend the plan? But you found out at this meeting, you can amend the plan, you can pull the permit, and you'll have the support of the whole community. So right there, it's something beautiful. Then also, just going back, because I paid attention to the first part of the meeting, right? What's wrong with the basketball courts we were paying $70,000 for? And where's the $70,000? And that's a little bit, a lot for RCA money. That's a little bit of money. I thought we had a cap. And just those things. We work together so we can make a beautiful, beautiful, wonderful city, and that's pretty much it. Save our waterfront. Save Asbury.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Kristen Schubert. I'm a resident of Ocean Township, 30 Ballard Drive. I live along Deal Lake, and implore you to stop I-STAR's development of North Beach. I'm here tonight to support the community of Asbury and convey my deep concerns about the long-term environmental and economic impacts of this development plan. My family, like hundreds of others in Ocean Township and Asbury Park, frequent North Beach. And like the residents here, consider these beaches and the lake our home. Public access to this beach, all of the beach, not what's proposed here, is one of the important reasons why we live here. Our children and the children of Asbury are indeed the economic base of your city going into the longer term. It's essential that these beaches remain public fully, and not what's proposed here. I would implore you to get guarantees to this in any future development plans. And while this is all important to us, what is even more important are the long-term environmental impacts of this plan. Like the leaders of other shoreline communities, you have the awesome and daunting responsibility to make sure we're all doing everything we can to build a resilient shoreline, and this isn't it. These plans don't even come close to doing that. I need to tell people, I have the Sazaki Plan that was referenced by the R-Star people, pulled it up and reread it. Beside the word "dunes" and "boardwalk," what they were referencing is not at all what was in that plan. The plan included stuff for Deal Lake, wherever the commissioner was. The plan talked about having a full development of this entire area that is resilient, so I really think you need to go back and relook at that. The plans here make us more vulnerable to flooding, as the gentleman already said, and will disrupt the already fragile ecosystem that's vital to ensuring resiliency. So these plans need to be stopped in favor of solutions that protect the environment, protect people's rights to access, and ensure the economic well-being of Asbury, because all three of those things can be accomplished. Such solutions are available and viable if we all have the courage to choose them. It is time for government and business to start working better together on behalf of the community and not the other way around.
I'm Conrad Neblet of 1218 Sunset Avenue. And the first thing I wanna say is to thank the council for asking great questions. Clarity means everything. So I really thank you guys. Appreciate it. The second thing is, I'm feeling very uncomfortable, the young lady stated it earlier, but I'm feeling uncomfortable that we are here at the mic, speaking to I-STAR, and what we get is your heads and your back. So I'm gonna be bold enough to ask for you to turn, I'm gonna, give me a moment, it's my time. I'm gonna ask that you turn your seats around and join us, so we can see your eyes, we can see your face, we can see your heart, and we can see your intention.
Yeah, turn your chairs.
And stop my time while they're trying to do this.
Your time's gone, guys. Goodbye.
And city clerk, if you can give me more time back, as this...
That's at the purview of the mayor.
Mayor, can you give me more time so I can state my case, and I thank you guys?
Fifteen more seconds, correct.
Good, thank you. So I thank you for honoring my request. Actually, it's the city's request, I say. So the other thing that I wanna speak to is, I was appalled that a boardwalk was torn up, was demolished, without the citizens being aware. I think that's very, very insulting, and it could've been handled in a different way, in a more humane way. We live here. You know, you guys work here, maybe some of y'all live here, but it really makes sense to include people. The next thing I'm gonna speak to is, and it's also in line with not letting us know, but it's a lack, this whole vision that you guys have, that you're not speaking today about this beach, private beach club, but it's going around town, and obviously, it's a conversation that you guys are having, and it's not complete from what, I forgot your name.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, thank you. It is a talk. It is in the plans. That's what it sounds like. So we are working real hard up to today about being inclusive in this city. We don't need anything private on the beach, on a public beach. You know, it's like, really, in 2018, with all of the crazy stuff that's going on, and we have to deal with more exclusion? I am just not okay with it. I'm not gonna be quiet about it. And council, y'all know, I have spoke about the master plan, and there was a lack of inclusion with that, and we're working through it. Thank you. And we're working through it, and we've been in conversation. So as the public is in conversation with the council around creating a better inclusionary plan of our city, we ask that you guys join us, and we join you, about having it to be inclusive. This is Asbury Park in New Jersey on the Jersey Shore, and this should not be, and it's not okay. And I'll give whoever means I got to.
First of all, I'm going to toggle on to what Conrad just said. My name is Candace Lynch, and I live in Asbury Towers. I want to address the town council and our mayor, who I stood behind during this last election, and I'm sure that everybody here did. The big elephant in the room is this private beach club. What Conrad said, I love this city. I grew up in Neptune. I saw this city when it was a vibrant city, and then 50 years, it was just downtown Beirut. And now I love where it's going right now. However, I do not think that we need anything private on the beachfront. We are culturally diverse, and why exclude the west side of Asbury Park or the less fortunate? Mayor Moore and the town council, I'd like you to think about a public pool. Thank you.
Hi, Maggie Quentin, North Beach. And I'm not a great speaker, but I loved what the other woman said. It was everything that I would've wanted to say. The only thing is, Brian, I wanted to say something. I saw your article in the Asbury Sun, and you were talking about everything that was going on, and it sounded really great. And it was, if I didn't know what was going on, I would've bought it wholeheartedly. But one of the things that you did say was that it was based on misinformation, and I would say it wasn't based on misinformation, it was about no information. We did not know, and I have to say, in North Beach, when we found out that the boardwalk was being pulled apart, our beach lockers were moved. The city didn't even know what was going on. So for me, the city should've said, "You have to stop yours, because we had our beach lockers there, and we had the right, we paid for it. You got the right." And I would say, "That's a bad on I-STAR. I-STAR should take our rights into consideration." And to me, this was a big thing of what I-STAR does. And I would ask you to think of the residents here as people who live here, and not as just nothing. So that's mine.
Maureen Nevin, 3 Deal Lake Court, Asbury Park. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for taking a very strong stand tonight, and I think that everybody is pleased to see that the council is considering looking at this plan as something, a work in progress, rather than a done deal. The public pool, wasn't it in the agreement that we had to have a public pool before a private pool?
No, it's their way around.
Also, we didn't get to see a picture, did we, of the meandering boardwalk, the materials? We saw the old boardwalk in 3D. Did you show what the materials are going to be for the meandering boardwalk? And I would like to ask that, we have all our meetings with the redevelopers. This is what the boardwalk is gonna look like. This is the meandering boardwalk. There's a lot left to imagination with this. You know, how are the boards going to be linked together? Who's going to maintain them? That sort of thing. Thank you. We really need to stop holding meetings under the exemption of, what was it, last time? Negotiations? Contract negotiations? Because obviously, I-STAR is referring to a contract that was signed back in '04. That's no longer valid to meet in private. And I think you can see by having all this input, that this is a much healthier way of discussing a major development. And whether it's major or minor, open it, transparency, that's what most of the people here tonight have asked for. And, okay, I'm gonna yield my time.
Maureen, and somebody from either our side or I-STAR's side can correct me, I believe the plans read that once the private beach club is completed, the public beach club has to be started within 18 months. I believe, and that has to be built by Madison Marquette. That's in the plans.
That was not the original plan.
It's in the plans now.
What, Michael?
It's in the SDA.
Oh, the subsequent amendments.
Correct.
Amendments.
Correct. From many, amendments from many years ago.
You yielded your time.
Okay, you yielded your time. Okay, thank you. No, you're done, Maureen. No, Maureen, you're done.
I have to answer about the open public meetings.
You yielded your time, we answered your question. Tom?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tommy DeSeno, and my address is classified by the Witness Protection Program. This, in case people don't realize, is year number thirty-six of the Asbury Park beachfront redevelopment, and I'm not joking, the mayor's shaking his head, yes. I was here in high school in 1982, when they first decided, hey, we're gonna sell off the beachfront buildings. When I was in high school, I didn't really understand, I went home, I said, Mama, I think the mayor just sold the ocean, I don't know what's going on, but that's when it started, in 1982. Now, I want to step out of character for me a little bit, and see if I can be peacemaker tonight, because I saw this thing for thirty-six years, and when you're on top of it like that, maybe you see a few things others don't. I got curious recently about, what is iStar's deadlines, and what is Madison Marquette's deadlines? So I decided to do Oprah requests and look, and I want to thank the clerk, she's lightning fast for responding. But I started getting stuff, and started reading them, and then I would say, hey, there's other agreements, and I'd make another Oprah request, and I'm up to twelve, and I'm not done. I keep finding more and more and more. And what I think happened is, this has been taking so long, almost two generations now, the people who were at these meetings, and it's not true that like, 2002 was done in a bubble, remember, Andres Stuani was here, mayor, we rented out several times Paramount Theater and had huge public meetings. Should have rented Paramount tonight, by the way. But we did, we had huge public meetings and lots of input. But you know what? You know who was at those meetings? Me. I don't live here anymore. So you've got people coming now, I understand why you're upset. You're saying, why are we being governed by this contract negotiated by Tom DeSeno, he's not here. You know, we want to govern ourselves, so I can understand the anger in this room. But I would like the people in this room to understand, these were contracts. The people back then did bind everybody, and this council inherited it, so please don't be angry with them. They've got a lot of handcuffs on when it comes to other agreements. So if you could just maybe tamp down your upsetment with them, iStar's, even the accidental developer, I mean, they inherited this stuff too. So, please don't look at anybody as a bad guy, and it's a political fight if you want to change this stuff, and I'm not in it, I don't live here. But understand, everybody got into this, nobody sitting in this room got us into this. But, one thing I wanted to know, I'm running out, so I gotta be fast. I'd like to propose to iStar and the city council, maybe if we could have a meeting, it's gonna be a bunch of meetings, to see if we could turn all these different documents into one document that we could put on the line, so the average Asbury Parker can say, when are they supposed to do this, and what are they doing there? Because I could tell you right now, there's thousands of pages governing these things over thirty-six years, and you see the mayor and people in the audience fighting over tonight, saying, what's the deadline, what's the plan, see if we could get it into one. And if you could do that, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Elaine Rocha, 301 Seventh Avenue, Asbury Park. I have some of those thousands of pages of documents that I've been pulling through, and I just had a few comments. Page two of the initial master redevelopment plan highlights redevelopment objectives I just would like to remind the council and iStar of. Subpoint one, preserve the character and history of Asbury Park. Waterfront area principles, preserve residential/entertainment conflicts, and design principles, bring the city back down to the ocean. And someone made a comment earlier with regard to any changes to the plan, or when you're tearing down a boardwalk. Zoning law, basic home zoning law, if I wanted to amend the setback of my fence, I have to apply for, I have to come to the zoning board, make my case, and then give notice to my neighbors, just to replace my fence. So the lack of notice given to the community, regardless of if it's been buried in a plan since 2002, and all the subsequent amendments, notice should have gone out. And I live 301 Seventh Avenue, and I would surely have gotten notice, and I didn't. In addition, page eighty-five of the master plan from 2002, pardon me, I don't have a podium, sets forth New Jersey State Development and Redevelopment Plan. Pursuant to Section 40A, 12A-7A5, a redevelopment plan shall include a discussion that examines any significant relationship of the redevelopment plan to A, the master plans of contiguous municipalities, B, the master plan of the county in which the municipality is located, and C, the state development and redevelopment plan adopted pursuant to the State Planning Act. The point being is that, that statute was enacted in 1985, and this is a 2002 document. I would like to understand iStar's analysis that was done against this plan, and your future plans for the boardwalk, how each of that legal analysis was done, which each of these plans that are referenced in this document. I have not seen that, and I'd like to request that publicly, and I will submit a subsequent request to the council for that analysis. Finally, the amendment, I have a copy of the Asbury Park Master Plan, a Master Plan Reexamination Report. I believe this was done in 2016. I'd like to also remind folks that, sorry, I need a podium. One of the closing paragraphs on page thirty-four of this document says, "While the master plan sets forth the city's land use policies and vision, it is not a regulatory document, nor is intended to provide the detail of a regulatory document." Instead, it is the city's zoning ordinance that fulfills that role. Also, so it's not a regulatory document. Finally, all these, may I have five more seconds to point to?
Five seconds. Read quick.
Planning goals, I would recommend that you read the planning goals that were set forth and reiterated. For example, provide for a variety of housing for all types of incomes, encourage diverse economic base, create a varied and robust open space and recreation opportunities, with emphasis on youth and seniors.
Hello, and thanks for listening. My name is Paul Eidman, I live at Nine Williamsburg Drive in Tintin Falls. I live about six miles away from here in Tintin Falls, and I visit this parking lot often. I surf fish here, I run my dogs here, and up until recently, this lot has always been the last little free and organic spot at the beach. Was. We need to make sure that everyone feels welcome here in Asbury and not excluded, and I for one feel that we need to have a north end as a natural area, and make it a retreat from the center of town. At the same time, we need to have extra sensitivity to the non-human residents around here. Deal Lake is one of the three coastal lakes that is a historic spawning site for alewife and blueback herring. Obviously, nobody's talked about them. Which collectively are known as river herring. iStar plans to pave and extend the parking lot and the boardwalk right next to the especially constructed herring flume that we spent seven million dollars on back in 2005, if anybody remembers that. And the construction was to make sure that these migratory species can get into and out of Deal Lake, okay? The population of river herring right now is in trouble, and pretty much circling the drain. Every single fish counts right now on the east coast, and that makes this an even more important issue. There are also American eel and several types of shad that need to migrate in and out of this flume. I am concerned that this new development is being done without consideration for the ecology of this diverse little ecosystem we have here in the middle of all this. Adding more pavement and possibly townhomes will clearly encroach upon this area, and the roadway runoff, fertilizer, weed killer, and more will pollute the waters around this area. Increased sediments and sands will block, as they already do, they will increase and block the entrance to the flume, and all of these factors could deter the river herring from spawning. I'm gonna cut through, I got thirty seconds. It's important to remember that this is a flood plain. Have we not learned anything from the past decade of superstorms? The other two lakes just miles away from here got completely ripped open and ran out to the sea, just like it did when Indians were here. There should be no construction of hard structures in front of a coastal lake. In the event of a storm, the lake rises and flows over the roadway, across the beach, and out to the ocean.
Finish it up in five seconds, please.
This is not an area that should be under consideration for townhomes. Deal Lake will flow right through them. Please give us a seat at the table, and let's develop the north end together, and make it open, accessible, natural space. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Healy, 305 Eighth Avenue. What I'm about to say is going to sound redundant, but one, you might not have heard a lot of it, because your backs would do it, and now that you're turned around, it should speak to the greater themes of our community. So, first off, let me say clearly and loudly that my family and I stand firmly on you ceasing all construction now. The environmental, social, and access implications are too large and too outlandish for construction to continue. Although you say now this path, paving, and dune work is all you have planned, we understand the 2002 redevelopment plan you're going off of, and we understand what this current construction paves the way for. On page nine of this 2002 redevelopment plan, it states that your first two redevelopment objectives are to preserve the character and history of Asbury Park, and make Asbury Park a great community to live in all year round. If you go through with this construction, not only are you investing in projects that are not catering to year-long residence, but you ensure the destruction of our coastline and wildlife habitat, directly contradicting your promise to preserve the character and frankly, livability of Asbury Park. You have already destroyed the dune work and planting done from 2013 with your current construction. Why should we trust you would ever have preservation in mind? On page seventeen of the same document, you also state that your construction will not restrict public access to the beach and the boardwalk. What you have proposed will do exactly that, with people having less than half of the original boardwalk left to use. Your current construction site also stakes out an area way beyond the original boardwalk into the sand. Like the council said, all of this will restrict public access, not only to the boardwalk, but also the beach. This redevelopment plan needs to be renegotiated on the numerous social and environmental changes Asbury has gone through in the past two decades. When I was just a kid, my family moved here and began coming to these beaches because we fell in love with the spirit of this city, a spirit fostered from its people, people who believed in a more equitable and environmentally sound future. And now that is where I want to raise my child. And that spirit cannot, and will never be found, in a pool club or a fifteen-foot boardwalk in order to make way for a private club. Your poor economics have already driven many out of this town, but unfortunately for you, there are still thousands of us left, and we're informed, angry, and have a lot to say about your outdated plans.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Amanda, sixteen, Lake Drive, Ocean Grove. I speak to you as-
I need your last name.
Amanda Adada.
Thank you.
Sure. I speak to you as a concerned citizen, an environmentalist, a surfer, and somebody who's been coming here since I've got my license, and if I could find a ride since before then. So, I would like to take a quote from the Ten Principles of Coastal Development, just because I thought it was very appropriate. Over the past few decades, we have seen American communities become more economically segregated from one another as extensive use of automobiles made possible developments that sprawl across the landscape. The high cost of land on the coast only exacerbates this phenomenon. To restore balance and move towards sustainability, developers need to provide more housing choices that appeal towards various market segments and demographic groups. Of critical importance is a mix of housing types, price points, and other uses that provide a more diverse and vital community. By clustering compact development, walkable mixed-use neighborhoods can be created that offer an opportunity for a variety of housing types rather than conventional homogeneous subdivisions. Different demographic groups have distinctive needs and desires for housing. Furthermore, housing needs and desires change with life cycle changes, such as when a young family evolves, such as our last speaker, into an empty nester couple, or a child living at home, or a child living at home becomes a young adult, living on his own in the community. A mix of housing opportunities therefore helps create not just one generation subdivision, but a sustainable community that accommodates life cycle changes and allows people to stay in the community. This is taken from the Ten Principles for Coastal Development. Thank you.
Ready?
You're the boss.
My name's Taylor McFarlane. I lived my boyfriend at 1317 Second Avenue in Asbury Park. I represent the New Jersey Sierra Club. We have about seventy-nine thousand members in New Jersey and about, I guess, 3.7 million nationwide. And what we do is, we try to practice and promote responsible uses of the earth's ecosystem and its resources. We ask that the Asbury Park Council stands up for the public and rejects this private beach club proposal. Beach access and the boardwalk are critical for the community. That area belongs to all of us and is held in the public trust. Not everyone can afford to pay hundreds of dollars for a members-only pool club, too. We should not be privatizing public and open space, especially not in flood-prone areas. Building impermeable pathways and luxury townhomes in areas vulnerable to coastal flooding will mean more runoff, more flooding, and more pollution in Asbury Park. These one-hundred-year-old floods are now happening every few years, thanks to climate change and development in flood-prone areas. Asbury Park is a diverse community, and the people that come here are from all walks of life. A luxury private beach club goes against everything that this town stands for. We shouldn't be turning greetings from Asbury Park into greedy in Asbury Park. We ask the council to reject iStar's private development proposal. It's important that the council keeps the diversity that Asbury Park is known for and also protect the environment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Bronwell, and I'm from Long Beach Island, New Jersey. Do you need my address there? Okay, 1820 Long Beach Boulevard, Ship Bottom, New Jersey. I'm here as a part of Surf Rider Foundation and to lend support to the local community. A lot of what I had prepared has already been said, so I would just like to reiterate my concerns and our concerns for that this development is going to be affecting public access, that we are against anything that limits the public's access and use of the beach because it is covered under the public trust doctrine. My other main concern is that these permits were issued before the storms and before the coastline changed, and that that's not being taken into consideration at this present time, both with the potential for flooding, and also with the potential for the impact on the ecosystem because the shoreline has changed in the last fifteen years. Thank you for holding this forum so that we were able to speak, and hopefully, next time, at the next one, I'll be able to hear the presentation because we were outside. Thank you.
My name's Kent Jarrett, I'm one of the three hundred-plus elders that live in Asbury Tower. I'm just trying to get used to this, so I have to read this right away. It's from another elder that a lot of people may know as Joni Mitchell. "They paved paradise, put up a parking lot with a pink hotel, a boutique, and a swinging hotspot. Doesn't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone?" Doesn't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone?" But I do also want to just share a little bit about my story. I moved here from Ocean Grove three years ago because I was priced out of my 375-square-foot cottage. I took care of parents for 10 years. We're Irish, we don't go down easy. I went through my retirement, I went through their house, and I wound up with nothing. And I discovered Asbury Tower. I waited three years to get in. And there's 300-plus people there, all have a lot to give to this community. I've told some friends, I still go into New York one day a week to work, I've told some friends there, I'm gonna maybe lose my apartment. They're building all this stuff all the way around me. And it's shocking how many people said, "Well, that's just how it goes." People have the money, they can build there. I'm so glad I stood outside for an hour waiting to get in here tonight and realized there's probably nobody in this room who's gonna tell me that. I deserve to have this apartment. I deserve to have a view of Fisherman's Beach and Surfers' Beach. And I am so terrified that we're gonna lose it because we're losing economic diversity. A private pool and a public pool sounds an awful lot like separate but equal. I really ask that you do make things more transparent. I called I-STAR, we got a notice in our box, all our mailboxes, October 5th, it was all gonna be we developed. That's all we heard, there was a phone number to call. And I called, and I talked to somebody at Representative I-STAR, and said, "I'd like to get a group of elders from my building to meet with you." Because frankly, for a lot of us, every sidewalk, every boardwalk is meandering. So, "Let's get together, and we can give you some good advice." I'm still waiting for the phone call. So I'd like to offer that now to anybody who can provide this, to call me, I can give you my number, I'll leave it, and we can get together and give you some good ideas.
Good evening, I'm Rob Lobiondo. I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue, North Beach Condos. I moved here with my husband Gus two years ago to enjoy the Seventh Avenue beach and the view. I've been coming here since I've been five years old. I've seen the glory days, I've seen 1970 and decades of decay. I compliment the redevelopment that's favorable, but I am completely opposed to this ripping of the boardwalk without transparency. I was under the same, I don't want to repeat what Madeline said, I live in her building. I formed the Save Asbury Waterfront with the Aggressed Coalition. I'm not only a concerned citizen, first I was worried about my view. We know the pool club's gonna be tall, we know we're gonna, as a community in North Beach, we're gonna lose our entire beach view. From my condo, from our amenity deck, there's so many implications. The seniors, now it's the boardwalk. We know what the plan is, it's two-phase. That whole boardwalk plan is to privatize the area for the wealthy that are gonna be in the pool club attached to the ocean club. It's no secret. We've seen the advertising, I've seen a sales presentation, I was in for a sales presentation. It's gonna sell more units, but it's not for this community. And there's a couple of reasons why. It doesn't promote diversity. Social exclusion should be gone in Asbury Park. That's what led to 1970. You want to repeat that? I don't think anybody does. It discourages public enjoyment. That was the legal term I was told to use. I can't go to my beach. There's something wrong with that, I live across the street. There's gonna be a 15, well, the plans that I've seen, it's about 28 feet, the pool club, and it's got really pretty illuminated pools on the beach, on the rooftop, and it takes almost the entire lot? You gotta be kidding me. That's not for Asbury Park. It's not for any of the residents, it's only for the elite, and it's inclusive. So, affects our fragile coastal environment. It was more than my personal view, I met a lot of people, and we're willing to fight the fight. We shouldn't have to hire a lawyer and use hard-earned money because a developer wants to do this. And I thanked the city council and the mayor, they made themselves available, numerous meetings, we were very impressed. We became expert really quick. Kathleen from our group knows the 300 pages of the amendments. We need to start following them. There's a lot of important changes in Sandy, including a 15-foot height restriction on that area, following current FEMA guidelines. I was part of Sandy. You really want to repeat that for your beach club? Because it'll be wiped away. I lived in Shark River, you know, and I saw what happened here, right across the street, it damaged our building. What else do I have to say? How about a solution? How about we get together with an expert panel like Save Asbury's Waterfront, some of the other concerned citizens, work with I-STAR? I'm a corporate guy, I get how this goes down. But do you want the input or not? Because we're still gonna fight the fight, and we're gonna ask our city council and our mayor to work with us as well, because this has to be changed. The boardwalk has to go back as it was. We don't want an arc to privatize with dunes, the private beach club. It's gotta end.
Joe, hold on one second. Before you start, so I know the young woman talked about, I know a number of you got stuck outside. So just so you know, we have three members of AP-TV, and God bless them, who are gonna be here all night in there, taping and editing, so this should be up and airing sometime tomorrow. So those of you who missed the beginning, you'll be able to see, right there in the window, you'll be able to see anything that you missed while you were outside. And just to clarify, and I think we made this announcement before, there was a discussion about moving to a bigger venue, but the priority from the Save Asbury group was actually to move forward tonight. You're having trouble hearing now?
No, no.
No.
On TV.
When it's on TV.
I mentioned it to him, Amy.
Okay, all right. So we got three guys there, listening to us right now, so, or two men and a woman. Okay.
Joe?
Hi there, Joe Grillo, 521 Cookman Avenue. A lot of people that already came up kind of expressed what we really want to happen, which is to halt construction and renegotiate this contract to something that's more about 2018 and not 2002. And Tommy DeCino, I gotta say, I rarely agree with Tommy DeCino, but I really agree with what he said about transparency. Put it online, show us what you're doing. There's no need to be obscure unless you're hiding something. Where I don't agree with Tommy DeCino is when he said about I-STAR being an accidental developer. This isn't the first thing, you know? I-STAR didn't accidentally change Asbury Lanes to a caricature of Asbury Lanes. I-STAR didn't accidentally take 1100 Ocean Avenue and decide to not, in good faith, provide affordable housing in there. I-STAR didn't accidentally not hire local contractors like Duane Small over here. And all non-union labor whatsoever, just to save a couple bucks. So what I suggest is that we renegotiate, and we have language that states that I-STAR will make good-faith efforts to encourage residents, women, minority participation in construction jobs, and to hire local. I-STAR should be required to demonstrate how they advertise and disseminate information concerning projects, opportunities to contractors and laborers. I-STAR should be required to provide a list of all contracts awarded by them, including dollar amount, and where the contract came from, and who is being hired. Because I know for certain that most of the contractors, I see the license plates, they're not even from Jersey. And that's gotta stop, that's not Asbury Park. And finally, this is to Mr. Bauer. I understand how pretty it looks, the drawing of the fisherman's lot, but when you call the fisherman's lot a dump, that's my town. That's our town. And I take that personally. This is not Spring Lake. This is where I walk, my dog, where I take my daughter to go play. And you know what? It looks perfectly fine to me. If you want to do something, take all those rocks that you showed the pictures of, and take them out, but it's not a dump, it's our home. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jess Alamo, I live on 305 Eighth Avenue. I apologize for reading off of my phone. First of all, I would like to say thank you for, representatives from I-STAR, for being here and listening. I know you can't respond, but you can hear what I am saying. So I would like you to listen at least. I do appreciate your time, but I'm not quite sure you knew what you were getting into with the people of Asbury Park. We love this city, we will fight for it, and we see you. See what you're trying to do to our town. And by the people of Asbury Park, I also mean our council, who I believe will fight for us. Something that the council has been doing over this last year is actually actively developing new ways for disabled persons to access the beach with the refoundation. This plan for a 15-foot-wide boardwalk is a few steps backwards from that plan, a lot steps backwards. And with the senior Asbury Towers being so nearby to that boardwalk, and a lot of those residents relying on wheelchairs and walkers, they need that access. And it is especially disturbing that that access will now be limited right by the towers. I'm telling you right now that the people of Asbury Park believe that I-STAR favors profits over us. And if you are okay with that, then you will go forward with these plans. You survived the PR atrocity that was the Asbury Lanes, but we are not happy about it. But we're pissed off now. And I implore you not to underestimate the people of Asbury Park. That's all, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Murphy. I live at 510 Deal Lake Drive, and I'm part of the core group of Save Asbury's Waterfront. I'd like to thank the council for all their support. Most of my comments that I prepared have also been mentioned, so I will just speak a little bit about my personal story to Asbury. I started coming here in 1957, the year I was born. My grandmother's from here. My first job was at the Berkeley Carter Red. I spent all of my summers here, every summer, riding my bike to what are now the Roaming Houses to serve widows from New York their lunches and dinners. I moved to Washington, DC, I raised my children. I worked on Capitol Hill. My ex is a White House press photographer. I moved back here seven years ago, right before Sandy. I ran a Sandy Relief Initiative for three years. Rebuilt 71 homes, seven volunteer fire departments, 11 surf shops, and eight small businesses. I know what something can do. This is not a resilient plan. This is not a plan for our community. I was in Washington with my daughter and my granddaughter when I heard from someone, not related to this community, but in the financial world, what these plans look like. And I reached out to the council, and I said, "What is going on?" And I overheard the plans to find them. This is not the way this community should find this information out. This information, I shouldn't have to hear it from a head-shone person in Washington over dinner. I should hear it from I-STAR, I should hear it from our community. I just was so upset about this, and the council knows how upset I am about it, and I will continue to be about it. I'm also very, very strongly involved with bringing our West Side youth into the East Side. So this community can be one. This beach plan restricts access. I participate on Tuesdays in the summer with the Asbury Park Boys and Girls Club to teach children how to swim and surf. This plan restricts youth, for our Asbury youth, especially on the West Side. Not to mention just the regular families who wait till 5 o'clock to bring their families to the beach because they can't afford to come on the beach. We are a community. We are a diverse, energetic, productive community that does good things. And you need to know that we are not gonna stop. This is just wrong, completely wrong. Thank you.
My name is Gus Raphanos. I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue. I've been an Asbury Park resident for two years. I'm a taxpayer and a voter. I did not receive any notification whatsoever from anybody regarding this, the boardwalk being torn up until late afternoon Friday of October 5th, that it will be taken out on Monday morning, the following morning. Having grown up in the South Bronx myself, that kamikaze style of approach of getting things done is called nothing short of a mugging from where I grew up. And that's very upsetting. When I moved to Asbury Park, I did not expect to be treated like this as a citizen. This is not why I pay so much in taxes for. It is a degenerate way to treat people of this city. We, the people of Asbury Park tonight, gathered here in the hundreds to demonstrate that we are infinitely larger, infinitely larger than I-STAR. If you think you've seen only 100 people tonight, trust me, you will see more. We are Asbury Park, expect us, I promise you. We will continue to be present. Expect us. Expect us. Thank you.
I'm Linda Leahy from Fifth Avenue in Asbury Park. I wanted to just bring up a few little things. I've lived here 31 years, and I've seen a lot of changes. And one of the places that I love to go, unfortunately, is either the North Beach or Ocean Grove. And most of the time now I go to Ocean Grove because I can't go down here. Also, it was my understanding that Monmouth County freeholders were going to purchase that property. They had put in an offer for it, and I haven't heard anybody mention that. So I'd like to know what happened to that, and why can't the Monmouth Conservation Organization, who buys property all over New Jersey, Monmouth County, why can't they put up some money to purchase this property so that it will belong to all of us? I just think, you know, something else has to be done with it. People, they go down there, they love it. They love that part of the beach. And to take that away, especially when we have bad storms, and it's crazy, it's really crazy. So I'm just putting in a request for really trying to save it. And I'm sure that most everybody here agrees with me. Thanks.
My name is Lee Lloyd. I live at 301 Fourth Avenue in Asbury Park. I live actually up the street from your new building. And I have to say that it's been my experience that these guys have pretty much broken lots of rules in terms of when they can and can't do construction. They do construction at 5:00 AM, I have videotape of it. I've been down there, watching this for years. I'm from this area, I grew up in this area. My great-grandmother grew up in this area. My grandmother, all my family has been here. And all I want to say is that now that I see this new development, and I see everybody asking respectfully of I-STAR to speak with them, it's been my experience that I-STAR has no desire to talk to any of us. They are here for elitist reasons. They're here to take us off of our beaches. They're here to price us out. They're here to bring in outsiders who can spend a lot of money, and then they're gonna skate off into the sunset happily. And I'm watching you guys tonight, and the looks on your faces are so insulting to me. I'm so insulted by you. The council, I have the utmost, the poor council, the poor council inherited this disaster. They're trying to do their best. But all I see here is a bunch of elitist people who think that they can walk into somebody's town and just take it from them without a peep from us. Well, I'm here to tell you that that's not gonna happen. I've been watching you guys for years. You guys are terrible neighbors, I'm gonna say that. Terrible neighbors, and you don't care. And I see your smirk, excellent. And you don't care about any of us. So that's all I have to say for that.
My name is Cassie Castelaw. I live at 407 Seventh Avenue in Asbury Park. I wanted to start off by saying I-STAR, I think, should give yourselves a round of applause because you didn't see the 400 to 500 people that showed up outside. Half of us stood outside in the cold for two hours, so. I know you already mentioned it, but can you please make sure next time we have a bigger space where we all can meet? Because the numbers are only gonna get larger from here. So like everyone else, I demand that this construction on the boardwalk stops. So like everyone else, I demand that this construction on the boardwalk stops. Obviously, none of you have ever been to the North Beach in the summer, but it's already more crowded than it needs to be. So if you're putting in these dunes and this little meandering path for your lovely little beach club, then there's not going to be anywhere for anyone to come to the beach. I moved here two years ago because I love this town, and like this makes me hate this town and makes me want to leave. And I know I'm not the only local here who feels that way. It's like, you're going to be the death of this town. I'm not going to, I've literally heard everyone else say the same thing that I've said, but I just wanted to say, we don't need a seat at the table. We need to be the table. This is our home, and anything you're going to do to destroy it and affect our lives needs to go through all of us.
Good evening, council. I'm back. Got some grades. And John, me and you had a long conversation about I-STAR.
Dwayne, even though we know who you are, you still don't understand.
Okay, well, I'm a former charter study commissioner, Dwayne Small.
Thank you.
Okay. John, me and you had a long conversation about I-STAR with what was going on, what I told you, someone brought to me that they were using you and the council to push all of the undocumented to the other side to deplete the votes over there. And now I see that you are allowing them to form a private beach. What are we dealing with? Is this back in when, what that guy named Bull Con or Segregation Forever? Why are you allowing them to do something like that? First and foremost, they are not in, they are not in compliance with the redevelopment agreement when it comes to that workforce component. If you notice, the prior developer before them, Asbury Partners, when you went down that beach, they had people from the community working. And you also had members of law enforcement speaking about how crime had went down because you had 70, 80 people from this community working on that project. What's going on now? I had a meeting with you, Brian, that was set up by the lady from the sun. And we were supposed to speak about workforce development. You backed out. I just heard a few people in here say, "I-STAR didn't want to meet with them." What y'all think y'all got going on here? What, y'all some gangsters? I'm dead serious. What y'all got going on here? Ain't no, did the plan also cause for no affordable housing? How is that possible, John? Pretty soon, well, you might not even be here. We ain't got much time on this earth, but what about our babies? Are our babies going to be able to walk down there and enjoy themselves? Are they going to have to worry about these people in these high-priced units calling the police because somebody outside is selling lemonade? It's off, we are, if I got a hot dog cart, I can't even go on Ocean Avenue and sell hot dogs. Why is that possible? Ain't this America, the land of the free, economic opportunities for all?
Amen.
And I'm going to say this last, I'm glad to see all y'all here. We going to bridge this east side and west side divide and recognize who our real enemy is. Our real enemy is sitting right up there with these deep pockets. Brian, we coming for you, we not going to stop. And John, I'm coming. I'm back. I'm coming here. I'm addressing jobs, housing, civil rights violations by law enforcement. I'm coming. And I want y'all to know, Brian, I bet you didn't know that a 15-year-old just got shot two weeks ago over there, and he's paralyzed.
Yes, yes, yes.
Y'all didn't hear that yet?
No.
But I'm betting.
Dwayne, thank you for coming back, and I've been asking you for three years to come back, so I'm glad you made it.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, how are you all? We're happy to see you back.
Thank you.
I'm Sandy, and I live in Asbury Tower. What obsessed me is that they're going to move that playground, the swings? That was donated for the woman who got shot to save the kids. And they want to move it? What's the matter with you guys? Huh? I don't think you have the heart for anything. And you, what you did to the carousel, oh my God, make it a skating rink? That is terrible. That's the big draw for the people to come into Asbury Tower, to see the carousel, to put the kids on the carousel. I'm surprised that you would do something like that. Very surprised. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just for, just for clarification, I-STAR has nothing to do with the carousel. That's Madison Marquette. So that is not I-STAR. So they're getting beat up, beat them up on factual facts. Okay. Thank you for coming. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Levinson. I'm 1501 Ocean Avenue. As we stand here, sit here, I wonder why it became necessary to have this type of a forum to have an initial discussion, an initial discussion about something that should have been open to the public for comment years ago. I'm offended by this organization going out there and destroying our boardwalk the way they have, and trying to make a land grab a part of our beach. That's our beach. It's not yours. I don't understand how it is that you can sit there with your body language, crossing arms, crossing legs, trying to ignore us. And I also understand at the same time that you're doing that because you don't have any choice. But I've got a message. And the message goes back to something similar to what we heard, oh, for those of us that are old enough to have read it in the history books. What happened when the Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor? When they realized what they had done without giving proper notification, the generals in charge turned around and said, "What have we done here? We have awakened the sleeping giant. Gentlemen, ladies, that's what you've done here. We are Asbury Park. We are not going away."
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Claire Schabra. I'm a homeowner at 510 Deal Lake Drive, and I just wanted to start by reiterating the sheer number of people that were down the street that weren't able to get in so that everyone understands how many people wish to make a public comment tonight. I don't really want to reiterate all of the points that have already been made. I think everybody's covered most of it. I was so glad that you brought up Spring Lake so often, since that is where I spent the first 30 years of my life, and it is a beautiful town. And one thing that I know from attending meetings there throughout my entire life with my family is that what keeps it such a beautiful town and such a beautiful boardwalk is the council's very, very cautious stance on developing the natural beauty of the ocean front. They do not let developers come in and take away that natural beauty. They've been really cautious about that. And if you look at a town like that versus a town like Long Branch, which is condo after condo after condo, and look at how the economy is doing across the board in those towns, I think that says a lot. Composite boardwalk's great. We did do that in Spring Lake, and we don't get splinters, so thank you, I-STAR, for saving us from splinters. But I think the flowery words of talking about sunsets and talking about meandering and talking about dunes, we all understand that you can't just throw on words like that and expect us not to understand the greater vision of how this is going to create, maybe not technically a beach that people can't access, but for all intents and purposes, a beach that is exclusive that people can't access. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patrick Ryan, 503 Sixth Avenue in Asbury Park. I've been sitting for a long time and listening to everything, and I, most of everything. I wanted to say, I've been here already. A couple of things. One, at the behest of somebody who's not here, I was asked to ask you guys to consider the historical society's issues in terms of the pattern of the boardwalk, whether that is being considered in this. I understand that exclusive to Asbury Park is the Hurricanen design, which I don't know what the plan is with that. That aside, there's a couple of things that I think you need to consider. I think most of us here are very practical, prudent people. We know you guys are in business to make money. That's a reality. But I think there's also a question of community. And what I've seen in the last few years, especially in this town, is an increased prevalence to do whatever the hell you want and then ask for forgiveness later. That seems to have happened a lot, and it seems to be happening more. And to go back to the gentleman, two speakers before, poke the giants enough, and they're going to get really angry. And I think more and more people are getting dissatisfied and unhappy with the development that's going on here because it is definitely changing the character of this town. If you don't consider that more carefully going forward, you are going to have more and more angry neighbors who will let you know in lots of ways. We are certainly happy to discuss things. And I think it's unconscionable that the people who live across the street from that boardwalk did not find out until two days before you started ripping it up. Going, going further, I live in this city. I walk on that boardwalk every day. Nobody ever told me at all. That is criminal, absolutely criminal, that the lack of communication goes on here. If you expect people to work with you, you have to bring them into the conversation. You have to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Louise Murray, 1604 Grand Avenue, Asbury Park. Lifelong resident, and I mean lifelong. My family came 1904. I was born and raised here. I'm still here. I was married to a surveyor, and my son is a surveyor and an engineer. And we have a lot of maps in our house. And that Deal Lake, at some point, used to run into the ocean. So I wasn't that old that I can remember that, but there is a map somewhere that shows that. My question to I-STAR is, have you even, has anybody ever thought about that riparian claims line over there in Trenton? I'm screwing up this thing. There's a riparian state claims line in the state of New Jersey. It runs all along the eastern seaboard, and it has to do with the tidlands. I have a sinking feeling that you guys might not even have clear title to build anything on that property. So that's something you should look into. And the other thing is the boardwalk. Mr. Bauer, is that your name? I'm sorry if I got it wrong. You speak about what kind of boardwalk, if you get around to it, which I don't think you're going to, but should you make, should you do the boardwalk? You're thinking about some kind of pressed material or whatever? You never, all right, you never talked about what Avon has. They have Epe wood. We had it on our boardwalk for a while. So what did they do? I don't know who did it. You did it. Somebody did it. Ripped up my Epe wood. Ripped up the Epe wood and put it in somebody's buildings, their, their businesses. I mean, that was beautiful wood, but somebody's using it, and I don't know who was responsible, I-STAR or Madison Marquette. I don't know, but you ripped it all up. It has no splinters. You don't slip. You don't fall. You don't have to treat it. Atlantic City has it, and Avon has it. But you didn't mention that. So anyway, I don't think you're going to get your boardwalk. But I also think you guys better check out that riparian claim line.
Hi, my name is Rita Moreno, and I live on Eighth Avenue. I've been coming to a lot of meetings since 1967. Hi, Mayor. And I want to say, they come in with these artist renderings that are, you know, they're beautiful. Then when you see the building that goes up, it's not so beautiful. The boardwalk won't be that beautiful. And the other thing was, say what you want about Carabetta, but at least he had models on the boardwalk. He had a whole room where you would walk in and see exactly how this town was going to look. We don't have that anymore. We have artist renderings, and they're not the true picture. Go look at the vibe picture that you have here somewhere, and it's not the same building. I mean, it's, it's something to look at. You have to have models. I know they cost more than an artist rendering, but it's very important that you have that. They used to have a room on the boardwalk, I guess John remembers, and it had all the models in there. And you could walk in there from 9:00 to 5:00 every day and see how this town was going to look in a model. You, I mean, you look at an artist rendering, that looks great, but I know the boardwalk's not going to look like that. And the other thing is, it used to be a fun boardwalk. I raised my children on that boardwalk. It's not fun anymore. All you have is bars and restaurants, and you have a pavilion on the boardwalk that's boarded up. That shouldn't be boarded up. I mean, my children still come to the beach, and they go to that beach, Seventh and Eighth Avenue. But they can't go to the pavilion because it's not open. They have to walk through Convention Hall or went Convention Hall. Why don't they work on the pavilion? How come they're starting out with a boardwalk? I mean, like, maybe they should work on that pavilion. I know you have a whole bunch of stuff in there. We watch it all the time, and there's a lot of cartoons on it now, which I don't appreciate. And that's all I have to say about the boardwalk.
All right. I'm John Weber. I work for the Surf Rider Foundation.
John, hold on one second.
Yes?
Just hold on one second. All the pavilions, all the buildings are being owned and operated and run by Madison Marquette, not I-STAR. Just facts. Okay, go ahead, John.
Facts are good. Fact, I'm John Weber. I work for the Surf Rider Foundation. I live in Bradley Beach. Forgive me because I was not able to get in here, so I didn't get to hear the presentation. So just apologies for not knowing whatever was said before. There's a couple hundred people in Johnny Mac's that didn't get into the presentation too, so hopefully you're good with them coming over here soon. Okay. I got to talk about my town for a minute. So in Bradley Beach, we have a bulk-headed boardwalk, but it ends at Third Avenue, and then it kind of goes back to Ocean Ave. And then we have no bulkhead protection from there until the southern end of our town, the Avon border. And I'm on the town council, and I said, "Well, that doesn't seem right. Let's see if we can get the whole town protected with the bulk-headed boardwalk." And I said, "Let's just extend that thing to the, to the border. Big project's going to take permits and cost millions of dollars, but let's start the process." We sat down with DEP last month, like, four people from DEP came, and the first thing they said is, "Well, that's on the footprint of the Army Corps' project, so you need permission from the Army Corps." So my understanding is that this, the meandering boardwalk, if it goes even like an inch east of where the, the boardwalk is now, that's on the Army Corps' project, so they're going to need permission from the Army Corps. So, you know, town manager, city manager, or I-STAR people, does anybody ask for permission from I-STAR, I mean, from the Army Corps to do this? Because it seems, if that happened in my town, I think it's going to happen in your town. So I think you're going to need permission from the Army Corps, just saying. Another fun fact, I'm the first to say, I know there's not endangered species just because there's a sign about endangered species up on that beach, but this is a press release from the DEP today that talks about the surge in the extremely rare plant, sea beach amaranth that's being found up and down New Jersey, whereas previously it had not been. Doesn't mean it's here, but it's just a, you know, it needs to like be really looked at first. And I don't know if they have to wait till spring or whatever, but it's just, this is like, it's magic. It came in the DEP press release today, so I'll share this with anybody. That's all I have to say, but I think you guys need to check with the Army Corps.
Hi, my name is Jeff Porter. I live at 1501 Ocean Ave. I'm probably the youngest person that lives there. And I've been skateboarding in Asbury all through the 90s. And I'll tell you, the skate park in the casino was one of the best things that ever happened. Really bridged east and west, all sorts of people. I bring that up because in I-STAR's video for their building there, they have a snippet of a skate park, which happens to be in Venice Beach. I've skateboarded there, and it's beautiful. It's great. It's not our beach. I often call Asbury the Venice of the East Coast, but we're not quite there. That park is state-of-the-art. It's awesome. It's on the water. They have tons of sand, you know. You know, California's a step ahead of us, but. I just wanna talk about pools. Living at North Beach, our pool's been leaking for like five years. It sucks. I've talked to workers that are working at the Ocean Club and they said that if they filled the pool and it leaked. So I just wanna know if, I mean, it's biblical. You can't build anything on the sand. Like, if you can't build a pool across the street that doesn't leak, what makes you think you can build it on our sand dunes? Those are dunes that are protecting my house, so that's really all I got. Thanks.
Hey, everybody. Joe Warner, 1103 Third Avenue. And just like a couple really quick points. One, I-STAR is here to make money, period. That's it. Number two, this meandering boardwalk is the first step, which everybody said, to get to the Bradley Cove townhomes, which have a bunch of regulatory hurdles but are still on the plane. So this is just their way to get to Bradley Cove, without a doubt. Curly knows. So, the second point is that when this council came in, in 2013, with John and Amy, one of the first things they did was try to renegotiate this agreement from 2002. And ever since that time, they've been trying to renegotiate this agreement. I-STAR refuses to renegotiate. First, they were upset that they weren't gonna get the agreement they wanted from the old council. Then they don't wanna make any changes and they're just dragging their feet because it benefits them. They can build a 2002 plan that doesn't suit our city, but it benefits them because it has things like this in it that don't work anymore. And the most important point that I think everybody needs to realize is, all this infrastructure work that I-STAR does, the taxpayers are paying for that. They are not paying one red cent for the infrastructure. And I saw Brian's line from 2012, which was that the future taxpayers are paying. It's none of the, Rita, it's not you, right? It's all the future taxpayers. But guess what? It's 2018. Now we have people living in the vibe. We have people living in South Grand. We have people living in Monroe. Those people are paying taxes into the infrastructure. So our current residents and our future residents are paying into the infrastructure money. So this money is money that is, I mean, $60 million they got from the old council to do infrastructure improvements. Those infrastructure improvements don't match what we need anymore. Right? They don't match. And when I was on council, I asked Brian many times, could I have an accounting of your credit card? Because essentially, he has a credit card. He buys what he wants for his infrastructure. The city pays the bill, right? Right, Brian? So, you remember. So, I never, I never got it. Ever, ever, ever once did he say, oh yeah, we got this money from these projects, we're paying for this infrastructure. Nothing. Never accounting. So to me, it's an absolute mystery. And I would assume to everyone, it's a mystery, what money comes in, what money goes out. And the easiest thing to do right now is take the credit card away and say, until you change the plan to meet the needs of our city right now, the RAB money, the special assessment for the infrastructure disappears. Because maybe it doesn't make sense anymore. That was right after an economic downturn, right? We're not there anymore. And for sure, it doesn't make sense in the context of what our city looks like today to go back to 2002. We all know that, we've all said that. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's my man.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hi, good night, good evening, sorry. I'm camera shy. So, my name's Samantha. I live on 607 Sunset. Hi. I live in an apartment. I was thinking about coming up here because of my nerves and I feel maybe I didn't have the right to speak, but I'm a psychiatric nurse in Trenton. I go into the community every single day where people have nothing. I don't have a gun, I don't have any protection, but what I do have is the support of this community, Mr. Moore. This community came together last Christmas and raised, gathered things from their homes worth thousands and thousands of dollars to help me help my clients. This community is going nowhere and I see that clearly. And I'm so proud of everybody that's here. I'm proud of you guys. Thank you guys for being here and at least listening to us. I've been coming here for 16 years and I used to go to that spot in North Beach just to decompress. It's very peaceful and I go there today with my dog. I pick up his dog [BLEEP]. And he's the happiest dog in Asbury Park. Nonetheless, I wanted to just give a minute, I'm shaking, forgive me. I wanted to speak on behalf of my friend Lisa Cramp, who was unable to make it tonight. She had to work. She raised, in one phone conversation we had, she said, I'm gonna go on GoFundMe. She raised $10,000, 10 grand in a month, two months maybe. We can do it. The point is, we have to stay united and that's the problem with this country. We have to stay united, west is coming east, and that's it. That's the end of it. So the more we invite them into the conversation, and I hate to say them, but people into the conversation, that's what's gonna establish power and unity. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Cross. I live at 1318 Vena Avenue in Ocean Township. I don't live in your town. I come here, I use the beach, I spend a lot of money here. I stood outside waiting to come in to talk. And I think at the end of the day, and what a lot of people have addressed here is that I-STAR is in it for the money, right? So, when you're out with your friends, think about where you're spending your money. At the end of the day, your money, every single dollar that you have is your voice. If you don't wanna support this company until they come to the table, then you tell all your friends, you tell all your family members, you tell all the people in the bands that you know to not support a company that does not support our community.
Alright, seeing nobody else in line, can I have a motion to close, please?
Move it. Second, second. I'm gonna make two more announcements, which I know I already made, so bear with me. We have members from AP-TV, I think three of them in there, who are gonna spend tonight editing this up and getting it up online tomorrow. So for those people who are outside who didn't get in, can you, you know, please reiterate that point? And I just wanna reiterate the point one more time that we discussed having this at a smaller venue and with a-
Larger, bigger.
Larger venue, larger venue. But with the Save Asbury group, they felt very, very strongly it needed to be here and tonight. So, I wanna make that point. And the last one I wanna make, just to the woman who spoke, and I absolutely respect her opinion, I just wanna reiterate though, the local businesses on the boardwalk are owned by Madison Marquette. So I just don't wanna see a wave of people not supporting businesses on the boardwalk, right?
They gotta get into it now. Let them get into it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, I believe at this time, the council wishes to break into closed session, Fred, under contract negotiations, amendments under the waterfront. So can I have a motion to temporarily break into closed session? We'll only be 10 minutes, so you guys can go take a potty break. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Please, move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Will be 10 minutes.
Top. Do not leave.
Can everybody take their seat, please? Can I have a motion to go back into open session, please?
Move it.
Move it. Second. On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, at this time, the council would like to amend the agenda to add Resolution 2018-399. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, at this time, the city manager is gonna be reading Resolution 2018-399.
Whereas on the night of November 8th, 2018, the master developer presented the plans for the boardwalk improvement plan, and whereas the public expressed much opposition to the plan, including but not limited to environmental concerns, public access, loss of public beach, loss of public space, and loss of public boardwalk, and whereas the mayor and council agree with numerous issues as presented by the public towards the plan, whereas the mayor and council hereby demand that the master developer come to the table, quote unquote, and work to amend the applicable documents to meet the needs and concerns of the public and city government, and whereas the mayor and council demand that the master developer immediately cease and desist all reconstruction of the boardwalk-
Woo!
-of the boardwalk improvement plan and renegotiate the design of said plan. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park, county of Monmouth, and state of New Jersey that the master developer is hereby demanded to cease and desist the project, come to the table to amend all applicable documents, and redesign the boardwalk improvement plan, and be further resolved that the mayor and council, that the city clerk shall provide a certified copy of this resolution to I-STAR, city manager, city redevelopment council, and the director of planning and redevelopment. That is all.
Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance or resolution 2018-399?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Does the council wish to make any further statements at this time?
The only statement is, again, we knew we had a small venue. A lot of people didn't make it in. It is gonna be on AP-TV within 48 hours, the latest.
So we just asked that you explain that to people?
Explain that to people, right.
That this was not some non-transparency? This was more urgency than space?
Right. And we could've gotten the power out next week, but we, no, not put it off a week. So Kathleen, Catherine, everybody agreed, have it tonight, and they were explaining to everybody why you have to stand outside. So we appreciate that. And again, if anybody couldn't make it inside and everybody went home, please forward any comments right to the city manager. Or suggestions, comments, ideas, whatever. Thank you.
And thank you for your input and your passion.
Let's go to the regular agenda.
Alright, we're moving on with the agenda. Next on the item is minutes. We have three sets of minutes to adopt this evening. Executive session minutes of October 24th, workshop minutes of October 24th, and regular session minutes of October 24th. Can I have a motion to adopt, please?
So we'll just ask that, if you're gonna have conversations, just have them outside so we can just get through the rest of the agenda and get home by 10 or 11.
Have a motion, have a second?
You got it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Keep going.
We're on to the consent agenda. Resolution 2018-380, resolution amending the metered parking requirements in the downtown waterfront area in the city effective every Saturday during the time period November 24, 2018 through December 22, 2018. Resolution 2018-381, resolution authorizing disposition of surplus property. 2018-382, resolution to cancel taxes on city-owned property at 806-2526 Avenue A. Resolution 2018-383, resolution canceling balances of complete sewer capital improvements authorizations. Resolution 2018-384, resolution accepting New Jersey Economic Development Authority grant Springwood Avenue Turf Club. Resolution 2018-385, resolution of the city of Asbury Park, county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the 2018 budget of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey, which is a chapter 159 for NJEDA Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund. 2018-386, resolution approving the award of contract for regional contribution agreement project for 1305 Langford Street. And resolution 2018-398, resolution approving special events application. Does anybody wish to have any of those resolutions pulled from the agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2018-387, resolution approving payment bills. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Count a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-388, resolution approving capital budget amendment. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-389, resolution providing for the combination of certain issues of $7,4,926 general obligation bond series 2018 of the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey determining the form and other details of such bonds, providing for the sale of such bonds and notes to the Monmouth County Improvement Authority pursuant to the 2018 pool governmental loan program. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-390, resolution of the city of Asbury Park, making application to New Jersey Local Finance Board seeking an approval for a down payment waiver pursuant to NJSA 48:2-11C and NJSA 48:2-7D. Can I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-391, resolution authorizing a transfer appropriations in the fiscal year 2018 budget. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-392, resolution modifying emergency contract for the wastewater treatment plant boiler repair service. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-393, resolution authorizing continuation of contract for SPCA for animal control. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-394, warning contract to PECMO Giordano Construction for basketball court and playground repairs. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions?
Question. So these are the basketball courts on Prospect Avenue that we want to fix, and we were like told, don't fix them during the council, during the public session?
So ask where the money's coming from, where the money's going.
Okay, whatever. I just want to make sure. We only own one basketball court. It's on Prospect Avenue. We want to make it better. Kind of got chastised for it, so.
No, we own it. The Hamery Courts?
We own it.
We own it.
At least with the schools. The courts are shot, they're-
We own it, that's the difference.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I was just making a point. Crack me up, who chastised for making an improvement on the west side.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-395, resolution authorizing annual service contract for repairs to portable radios for the police department. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-396, resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park referring proposed amendments to the section of district standards in central business district redevelopment plan to the city, Asbury Park Planning Board, and directing the planning board to take certain action. I believe the council wished to table-
Motion to table.
Right.
Move it, second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-397, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park acting as a redevelopment agency entity, authorizing escrow agreement with the Regional Development Group regarding 215 First Avenue. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Have a second?
Wait a second. What, what is this?
This is sleeping-
This is 397.
Sleeping in public places.
Okay.
No.
No, 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 we're in a resolutions. This is the one that I provided at your desktop tonight.
Okay, that's why I don't have it. No problem.
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
I've seen, I have, I just read it right now, so it passed.
We're on to ordinances introduction. The first ordinance, 2018-37. Can I have a motion to table, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-48, this is a capital ordinance appropriating the sum of $70,000 for repairs of rotating biological contractors. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for November 28, 2018. 2018-49, bond ordinance providing for various sewer utility improvements by and in the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, appropriating $200,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $130,000 in bonds or note to the city to finance a part of the cost thereof. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for November 28, 2018. Ordinance 2018-50, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of and payment of purchase price of real property in construction of firehouse by and in the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, appropriating $20 million, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $20 million bonds or notes of the city to finance the cost thereof. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for November 28. Ordinance 2018-51, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 traffic, Section 7-36 handicap parking of the code of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for December 12, 2018. Ordinance 2018-52, an ordinance establishing a restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons at properties located at 20 Dewitt Avenue in the city of Asbury Park, amending and supplementing Section 7-36 entitled handicap parking of Chapter 7 traffic of the revised general ordinances of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for December 12, 2018. Ordinance 2018-53, an ordinance amending Section 4-1.3 entitled Terms of License in Section 4-9.6 Annual Renewal, Chapter 4 of General Licensing of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for December 12, 2018. And ordinance 2018-54, I believe the council wishes to table, so can I have a motion to table that, please?
Move to table.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances, second hearing, public hearing. Ordinance 2018-21, can I have a motion to table that, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-39, can I have a motion to table, please?
Move to table.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution, or ordinance 2018-42, can I have a motion to table, please?
Move to table.
Second.